Feature, so we're expecting that we'll have a quorum in V voter and be ready to move forward promptly at 7:30. We're now taking a roll call on V voter. Please go to your V voter screen, acknowledge your presence in the meeting and press vote to establish a roll call. Please go to your V voter screen and vote present to establish a roll call. Hundred and thirty-five members of the town meeting having indicated their presence this evening. We have a quorum and we're ready to commence. We will start our meeting as we always do with the pledge of allegiance, placing our right hand over our heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're ready to proceed this evening. Before we do, a few procedural notes, as is our normal practice here. We will, after the preliminary motions tonight, move on to the consent agenda. There have been two edits to the consent agenda under our practice where any five members of the town meeting may ask that something be removed from the consent agenda. Articles sixteen and twenty-one have been removed from the consent agenda. So when we vote on that later, it will be absent those two motions, which we'll consider in the usual form. Also, a procedural note, when we get to Article twelve, there'll be two motions that relate to Article twelve and Article thirteen. And that will be that the order of those articles will be reversed. We will suspend, ask for a motion to suspend the rules and take those out of order, taking thirteen first and then twelve. And then additionally, we will be moving consideration of those two articles, thirteen and twelve, to a time certain, and that will be on our next meeting on Monday evening. So for those of you planning for only one night, I'm sorry to disappoint you. But like much else in democracy, sometimes these things take a little bit of time. The, so when, we won't be debating thirteen or twelve tonight. And we do, we'll consider them in reverse order on Monday night. We're otherwise, I think, ready to proceed with our agenda. A couple of notes on members of the community that we have lost since the last time we met. Margaret Peg Paranick passed away. Peg was the registrar of voters in the town of Winchester from nineteen ninety-seven to just last year, twenty nineteen. She was also an active member of the Women's Republican Club and Town Committee in town. In addition to her many other activities in town, she was part of the Yenka Society and the Friends Winchester Hospital. She was at all times a constant and active presence in the community and embodied what we think about when we think about contributing members in Winchester. And she also was for us fortuitously the mother of Sergeant Dan Paranick. So we express our condolences to Dan on the loss of his mother. And in general, are grateful for the, our opportunity to work with Peg in the community. Another tragic loss that we suffered in August of this year was that Bob Bigelow passed away. Many of us knew Bob. He was a graduate, a nineteen seventy-one graduate of Winchester High School where he captained the boys' basketball team. He went on from there to the University of Pennsylvania where he appeared under Coach Daly in a number of NCAA tournaments during his tenure at Penn. And then even more remarkably, from, for a boy from Winchester, he was in the nineteen seventy-five National Basketball Association draft, a first-round pick by the then Kansas City Kings, now Sacramento Kings. He played in the NBA for a couple of seasons, went on to some coaching at Tufts, a very successful business career, and then devoted a large portion of his life as a author and commentator and speaker on youth sports, both in Winchester and throughout the country. He was in high demand as a speaker, which you would realize after listening to him. He was one of those people who thought that youth sports should be about putting the children first and not the parents. And he was just a great presence. He had a remarkable ability for somebody who was six foot six to stand quietly in the corner of a basketball court without mentioning his own tremendous achievements as an athlete and just quietly urge on and coach others. He had a, despite all his remarkable achievements, he had a tremendous humility about him. And he was just an amazingly kind and friendly person to all encountered him. So we express our condolences to Bob's family and all of us feel that this evening. We have a number of members of the community and the town meeting who are concluding service on a number of boards, and we just wanted to make a note of that and think that, and thank them for that. Bob Deering has served a great tenure on the Educational Facilities Planning and Building Committee, the E F P B C. And we thank Bob for tremendous years of service where he guided us through the renovation of the Lincoln McCall Ambrose Vincent Owen Winchester High School. And then, of course, the continuing renovations and expansions over at McCall as that repeated itself. So we express our great appreciation to Bob for that. Also Helen Filio, who's just been a stalwart member of both the town meeting and the Capitol Planning Committee, where she has just done a great job in leading our efforts there, a very difficult role. And one she has fulfilled with great tenacity and constancy. And we thank Helen for everything that she has done for us in that role. And then finally, Betsy Craig, who has recently left the planning board. More than most, Betsy's been a constant presence in the community as a leader in town government, serving as a member of the planning board and the select board for a number of years and has been a great contributor to the community. And we thank Betsy for her great service, the planning board in particular. I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged and thanked Betsy for all the great work that she has done. And they especially appreciated serving with her as colleagues on the planning board and benefiting from her great expertise and diligence on behalf of everybody in the community. So thank you to those committee members. This brings us this evening. Okay, so someone has asked that we scroll the V voter roll call so people can take a look to make sure that they were counted. So we'll scroll that now. So that people can do that. Just as we're scrolling the V voter roll caller, attempting to that, you can look at the screen now in V voter and you'll see people who voted present showing up. It's organized by precinct and then alphabetically. So you should be able to find yourself there. The one procedural note this evening. So the one difference in the conduct of this meeting from our prior meeting in the spring is that there is a new added feature in this V voter that allows us to queue up people to speak. So if you look at the V voter screen on, on the lower right-hand side of the screen, there is a button that says speak. If you want to speak on a matter, you should click on speak. It will then ask you if you want to speak to a motion or also give you some other procedural alternatives at the same time. So this evening, as we commence our debate and we get to a motion under consideration that people feel debate is necessary or meaningful. And we get to that point with the chair asked for debate. Please indicate your interest in speaking by clicking on the V voter speak button. And then that will give us a, an opportunity here to monitor people who have been asking to speak and we'll make sure that we aren't missing anybody. It provides us a screen with a timestamp and looks to be a great additional feature. Having my own challenge. Okay. Yeah, so. So we're going to retake the role to allow people who didn't get themselves registered to do so now. So the roll call will be open for one minute. So please return to the V voter screen and, and indicate your presence by clicking the button there and pressing vote where you'll receive an indicator that your vote has been received. Mic on mute. That was great. So if you're having a problem pressing one of V voter, just refresh your browser and you should be able to do that. We'll leave that roll call open for another minute, another minute. Or did we already close that? Okay. And what, what's the count? Okay. So we have a hundred and fifty-eight members present. And just a reminder that I made with my cell phone mute, I apologize for that. We're trying to use the speak function in V voter. If you want to address the meeting, please press speak. And if you have a question, a procedural issue for the town clerk, please try use Q and A. We're trying to limit our use of chat so that we don't have extraneous comments that are outside the debate or the procedural rules by which we govern the meeting. So this brings us to our preliminary motions. So turning to the yellow-covered Fall Annual Town Meeting Articles Motion and Comments Book. On the first page are the preliminary motions. And under the preliminary motions, it's moved and seconded that the preliminary motions be voted as one. They are as written out in paragraphs one through four on page one of the Fall Town Meeting Book. The motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of the preliminary motions, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen and vote yes or no on the preliminary motions. We will leave that open for thirty seconds. Voting is now closed on the preliminary motions. The motion have been made and seconded. How many members having an opportunity to vote? Hundred and fifty-two having voted yes, one having voted no, and one abstention. The motions pass. A word about abstentions. We don't necessarily record abstentions ordinarily. If you don't want to vote, you don't need to vote. So we will not be including the abstention count in announcing the votes going forward. So the preliminary motions having passed, this brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been amended somewhat, as noted by the chair. At the outset, it's been amended by removing from the consent agenda Articles sixteen and Article twenty-one. So the consent agenda has now made, it's moved and seconded that the twenty twenty Spring Town Meeting advanced for consideration. Articles one to two, nine to ten, nineteen, twenty-two to twenty-four, and twenty-six to twenty-eight. And take action on such articles without debate on any of such articles, provided that upon request, the five voters at this meeting may before the vote is taken on this motion or otherwise at the moderator's discretion, articles shall be removed from the consent agenda and should be acted upon the ordinary course of business at this town meeting. The consent agenda, Articles one to two, nine to ten, nineteen, twenty-two to twenty-four, and twenty-six to twenty-eight. A motion having been made to move and approve those articles on the consent agenda. Motion's been made and seconded. Please go to your V voter screen to vote on the consent agenda. Voting will be open for thirty seconds. Voting is now closed on the consent agenda. Hundred and fifty-three members of the town meeting having voted in the affirmative, four in the negative. The consent agenda and the motions as set forth in consent agenda have all passed. Thank you very much. This brings us now to Article three. Article three appears on page four of the Town Meeting Book. And under Article three, it's moved and seconded that the town meeting adopt as a matter of procedure, except where otherwise voted by the meeting. A mechanism for recording each vote of the meeting in a manner that provides for an immediate electronic recordation and tabulation of the vote, provides a transparent record of how each member voted on any question put to the meeting. And three, with consultation with the town clerk, proponents submit to the town meeting a proposed bylaw amendment, which amendment will be subject to a further vote at the town meeting, making permit these procedures for successive meeting. Excuse me. So I apologize because under Article one, although we have placed the Article one reports on file, the chair did agree to allow the school committee, which is operating in a moment of great stress and tremendous pressure and addressing issues which are critically important to the students in the system and all of us to provide its report under Article one. So we have an opportunity to view that this evening, given its urgency and criticality. And accordingly, the chair apologizes for jumping ahead to three. And at this time, we will air that school committee report under Article one.
Hi, I'm Brian Vernalia, Chair of the Winchester School Committee.
And I'm Karen Mariano Bolinesse, Vice Chair.
Tonight, we will update you on a very unusual start to the school year. As you will see, things look different. Our district has had to adapt to the global pandemic for everyone's safety while still prioritizing a strong education. A flexible growth mindset is crucial during such a time, and our students have stepped up. Our teachers and administrators worked tirelessly through the summer to return students to school. Our classrooms look different. Our students must physically distance from each other and fewer can attend at once. But our teachers are able to bridge the distance thanks to their dedication, ingenuity, and professional development. At the same time, many students are learning exclusively.
Mr. Moderator, members of the Select Board.
Hi, I'm Brian Vernalia, Chair of the Winchester School Committee.
And I'm Karen Mariano Bolinesse, Vice Chair.
Tonight, we will update you on a very unusual start to the school year. As you will see, things look different. Our district has had to adapt to the global pandemic for everyone's safety while still prioritizing a strong education. A flexible growth mindset is crucial during such a time, and our students have stepped up. Our teachers and administrators worked tirelessly through the summer to return students to school. Our classrooms look different. Our students must physically distance from each other and fewer can attend at once. But our teachers are able to bridge the distance thanks to their dedication, ingenuity, and professional development. At the same time, many students are learning exclusively from home. And again, our educators are bridging the distance through Zoom and other online platforms. We are essentially running two school systems at once, one partially in person and one fully remote. Things look different beyond the classrooms as well. Some sports seasons were deferred while others adopted strict safety standards. After-school clubs and activities moved from our once bustling school buildings to online. Lastly, we must acknowledge we are in the midst of two pandemics. This year, we look to rebrand our high school logo at the same time that we redouble our efforts on diversity. All staff have participated in teaching tolerance and anti-racism workshops, which continue throughout the year. We've worked hard to keep up with these changes and to fund them. The school budget was developed a year ago, pre-pandemic, when classes looked like this. It never envisioned PPE, additional substitute teachers, deep cleaning, or running two modes of learning at once. We are thankful that WIFI supported our district's technology upgrade just a few years ago, or the switch to remote would not have been possible. At Spring Town Meeting, you approved our compromise budget, which got us $280,000 closer to our original request. This has been essential to making this your work. Thanks to you, we're able to have full-time kindergarten aides, an elementary instructional coach, an additional half elementary counselor, and high school nurse. These positions are ever more important in supporting the physical and mental health of our students who are coming back from six months away from our schools. So where are we at this point financially? This is a year of uncertainty. Personnel are in flux and hiring replacements for any additional leaves could be costly. The CARES grant allowed us to purchase PPE and software for in-person and remote learning. But this grant ends on December thirty-first. Special education is always hard to predict. The number of out-of-district placements could result in added costs to the town this year or next. Lastly, we must be mindful of additional expenses on the town side incurred by the DPW for deep cleaning our schools and energy costs for devices such as air purifiers. If twenty twenty-one is like twenty twenty, we may see other unanticipated challenges in the spring. But we wanted to preview some of the areas that we are monitoring closely.
As we start this year, our district K through twelve enrollment is four thousand four hundred fifty-eight. And we have a total enrollment of four thousand six hundred forty-five students. This represents a decline of about one hundred fifty students from our projections, a similar trend across the Commonwealth. Where did these students go? During this pandemic year, about double the number of students have transferred to private schools or decided to homeschool. Also, we are ninety-nine students below our kindergarten projection. Whether these kindergarteners will come to us next year for kindergarten or move directly to first grade or continue in private school is yet unknown. On the horizon, housing developments are likely to bring two hundred to three hundred more students to Winchester. Projecting enrollment for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year will be very challenging. And enrollment drives our biggest budget item, personnel cost. We believe the students will return and more will come. Despite the district-wide enrollment drop, McCall is at our pre-COVID enrollment projection for this year. And thanks to the residents of Winchester, the McCall expansion was completed just in time, adding six crucial classrooms and expanding our cafeteria considerably. Thank you. At Spring Town Meeting, you provided funding for the feasibility study to replace Lynch Elementary School, in which we will partner with the MSBA and share the construction costs. Groundbreaking for a new Lynch isn't envisioned until early twenty twenty-four, with a planned opening in fall twenty twenty-five. With the Lynch process underway, we recognize that a Morocco replacement might be a decade off. And at Spring Town Meeting, you agreed to fund a study of the Morocco systems to see how we could extend the life of the building. The completed study outlines several critical areas that need attention. In Article eighteen, you will hear more about the design phase of what is being called the Morocco School Life Extension Program. The construction phase is still likely a year away, but we should begin planning its funding in the near future. In sum, this school year has not started in any typical way. But our teachers and staff have worked very hard to get us to this point. We still face many challenges ahead, especially during the uncertain winter months. But much as this classroom charter sets out, we too will aim for a safe environment in which all our students can thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to the school committee for that report. I think the town meeting will adopt the classroom goals there of making this meeting calm, happy, excited, and safe. You're on your own for excited. The, so I apologize for omitting that.
Mr. Moderator, members of the Select Board.
Matt. Matt is jumping ahead of me on Article three. Just one thing I wanted to make clear to the meeting, in the consent agenda, it included our passage of Article one and Article two. Article one was hearing the reports of town officers and placing them on file. So that will include the reports that have been submitted, including particularly in accordance with our statutory obligations, the report of the Winchester Planning Board. Those reports have been received, placed on file. They're available to you through the town clerk's office and portal. the town clerk's office and portal. So we have accomplished our business there and appreciate the school committee's efforts to update us on their critical activities, and appreciate the meeting's indulgence of the scheduling there. So now, this brings us back to Article Three. Article Three appears on page four of the motion booklet. And Article Three, it's moved and seconded that the motion is as stated on page four, and that the town meeting adopts the motion. The one procedural point on this I want to make, this article is put forward by the Select Board, that is somewhat of a procedural courtesy. This was originally a citizens petition initiated by Mr. Miller and others. We asked in the spring, given our uncertainty about our facility and dealing with the remote meeting, that non-critical matters be put off. And Mr. Miller, Mr. Nakabato, and others very graciously agreed to that. And as part of that, the Select Board agreed that they would, of their own volition, put this forward. So this is a motion that you'll note asks us to make permanent the type of protocols and procedures that we're using this evening. Ordinarily, outside these remote meetings, we conduct our meeting by voice vote or by standing count where necessary. This is a motion which seeks to change that procedure so that we would permanently adopt a V-voter-like procedure where the votes of the town meeting members are recorded electronically and available for viewing. The one point about the motion, under the town bylaws, we work under Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order allow the meeting at any particular meeting to change the procedure. So here, this evening, we would be adopting this procedure, which we, of course, are already using. But I believe it's the intent of the proponents, and it is as stated in the motion, that they would go forward in the spring and seek a formal bylaw change, making this a permanent condition of the meeting going forward. And as such, the chair will entertain and allow debate that extends to not just this evening's conduct of the meeting, but the conduct of the meeting going forward. So a majority vote required, and with that, we're ready for the presentation of the proponents.
Mr. Moderator, members of the Select Board, members of Town Meeting, and fellow residents, I speak on behalf of more than 280 proponents of Article Three for the use of electronic voting technology to record and make public the votes of Town Meeting members on issues that come before Town Meeting. Article Three was deferred from Springtown Meeting at the request of the Select Board and with the consent of both the Board and the proponents. Last winter, in just a few hours at the dump, and before COVID-19, nearly 300 Winchester residents joined this petition. The motion before you tonight will adopt electronic voting through procedural changes to the bylaws, to be drafted in consultation with the town clerk and presented to the Springtown Meeting. We thank the moderator, Mr. Haley, for his help in tailoring the motion to include an appropriate mechanism to implement Article Three. Town Meeting is an elected legislature, an elected local legislature. We are legislators. We are elected representatives of the residents of Winchester. The essence of representative government is accountability of those who are elected to those who elect us. How we vote in this legislature should be knowable to those who elect us to represent them. Article Three will make our actions, our votes, knowable to residents of Winchester. All of us agree with the Washington Post that democracy dies in darkness. It is time to move toward the light. Town Meeting should join many other towns, including Lexington, in putting light, electronic voting, on its operations. The COVID virus has made Article Three an obvious and simple step forward. Tonight's meeting is the second town meeting held in substantial conformance with Article Three. Our town clerk, Mary Ellen Lannan, has investigated and solved, as she seems always able to do, the technical requirements for implementing Article Three. To conclude, we seek favorable action on Article Three to collect and make public the votes of Town Meeting members to the residents who have elected us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. May we have a recommendation from the Select Board? Yeah, he's asking to speak on the motion. Having some problem finding Mr. Bettencourt or a Select Board member?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Uh, thank you. The Select Board did not vote on this. We put this on the warrant as a courtesy of the applicant, so I'm just letting you know.
Thank you very much. Further on the motion, Mr. Wilson?
Roger, you muted there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was muted. Sorry. I just want Town Meeting, obviously, we are going to pass this, or we couldn't finish our meeting, but for tonight. But I want Town Meeting members to be aware that the essence of representative government is representativeness, not the transparency. And in fact, transparency at the national level has not worked very well, and I think we should proceed with some care. The people that are primarily interested in individual legislative records are special interests rather than the common interests, and we should be careful about this and have a good debate in the spring before adopting this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Just as a matter of clarity, we've separately adopted these procedures as a town meeting this evening, so if you're thinking of voting no on the idea that you could end this meeting, that won't work. Further on the question. Seeing no further requests to speak, which is a reminder, should be accomplished. Up, there we go. Mr. Conti. Anthony Conti, could we elevate him to speaker, please? Mr. Conti, further on the question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had a little trouble getting on board here. As Mr. Miller said, accountability is the essence of representative government. None of our constituents, frankly, have any idea how any of us vote. Let's be very honest about that. In fact, I ventured to say that the vast majority of our constituents have no idea who any of us are. We might as well have a random selection of people, because nobody knows how we vote. That is wrong, frankly. I don't see any special interest involvement in this, as the previous speaker mentioned. This is the right thing to do so that our constituents get to know what we are doing. They really don't know. They ought to have that opportunity. And I, for the life of me, cannot think of any reason why anybody would, should vote against this proposal. This is, this is only the right thing to do with, you know, as I think it was Justice Brandeis who said that sunshine is the best disinfectant. And our citizens have a right to see what we're doing, and right now, they don't have that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further on the question. The chair seeing no further requests to speak at this time. Matter is ready for a vote, majority vote required. All those in favor of Article Three, please vote aye. All those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V-voter screen. 124 members of the meeting having voted in the affirmative, 24 in the negative, majority vote required, the motion passes. The town clerk has asked for a restatement there. 124 in the affirmative, 24 in the negative, the motion passes. You are welcome, Madam Clerk. This brings us to Article Four. Article Four is brought by the Planning Board. A two-thirds vote is required. It seeks to amend Section 3.2.1 of the Winchester zoning bylaw by allowing home occupations in accessory buildings. Home occupations being, of course, how all of us are making our way through things these days. So Article Four, brought by the Planning Board and the Select Board, and under Article Four, it's moved and seconded that the town approve Article Four as printed in the warrant. The language also appears and is restated on page five of the Fall Town Meeting Motion The recommendation from the Select Board, Mr. Bettencourt, I take it since you're a sponsor here, your board is a sponsor, that you are in favor of Article Four?
The Select Board recommends favorable action, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this brings us to the presentation by the Planning Board under Article Four. Ms. Von Mering, the Chair of the Planning Board, will be with us momentarily.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Town Meeting. We're going to be talking right now about Article Four, Home Occupations. The objective of this article is to allow home occupations specifically to occur in accessory structures, where now they are not allowed. The two houses that you're seeing here are actually for sale in Winchester, and you can see that there's multiple ways that you could have accessory structures on your property. There could be a, you know, a small or, quote, you know, modest-sized house with a larger structure in the back, or it could be more of, this is actually a pool house, but it obviously could have a, some other type of structure on a larger piece of land. The idea is that this is not necessarily meant for large or small sites, and that if it can accommodate an accessory structure, it can. So home occupations are restricted currently in the Winchester zoning bylaw through Sections 3.2.1. And we're going to go over that on the next slide. The proposed change would allow for office space and other home occupations to occur in these accessory buildings. Nothing in the chain, in the proposed change, would affect the dimensional requirements for accessory buildings. So you would still need a permit for something over 200 square feet, and you would still need to adhere to all the dimensional controls for those accessory buildings. None of those are changing. So this is kind of an outline of what the existing restrictions are for Section 3.2.1. So no person other than the members of the family can be engaged in occupation. The use of the dwelling unit for the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and subordinate with use for residential purposes. The only thing that's changing here in Number Two is the fact that the size of the home occupation space can't be more than 25% of the total square footage of the dwelling unit and the accessory building. Before, it was just talking about the dwelling unit. But now that we're allowing accessory buildings to be used for home occupations, we're counting the total square footage. So there can't be any change to the outside appearance of the building, other than a potential sign. This article is only doing two things. One is this calculation of adding the dwelling unit from the accessory buildings, and the other change is taking out the no home occupation shall be conducted in the accessory structure. So these are the other restrictions that already exist in the zoning bylaw. So they can't, you cannot sell anything, there can be no sales of products on the premises, no traffic can be generated from the occupation, and no equipment that could be used in occupation to create noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference. So currently, homeowners and renters are labeling the space above these garages as either workout rooms or playrooms, and that's how they're kind of getting around this zoning provision. The Planning Board feels that this change in zoning will be undetectable to neighbors of home occupations due to the restrictions currently in place. That is all we have for this article. This article is also sponsored by the Select Board. This was a joint article of the Planning Board and the Select Board. So thank you so much for your time. The floor is opened up to questions.
Thank you very much. That was obviously not Ms. Von Mering, the Chair of the Planning Board, who notes that her voice must have dropped precipitously. I apologize to Ms. Von Mering and also to Mr. Zekely, the town planner, who was the speaker there. Someone's made the very reasonable request that we identify the speakers. We'll both try to do that and try to do it accurately as well. So I apologize to Ms. Von Mering and Mr. Zekely. We've had a recommendation from the Select Board, which is favorable action on Article Four, as they are joint proponents here. Further on Article Four, we recognize Town Meeting member, Michael Galvin, Mr. Galvin. Elevate Mr. Galvin onto the Zoom feature to allow him to address the meeting. Mr. Galvin?
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify, I think you answered this, but the way this was written, the number four, where you're eliminating the no home occupation shall be conducted in the accessory building, there's a second number four, but that was number five, is that correct?
That is correct. There was a renumbering. Thank you.
Mr. Zekely popping up there, very impressive. Thank you very much, Mr. Galvin, Mr. Zekely, thank you. Further on the question, Jacqueline Welch, Select Board Member, could we, there's Jackie?
Can you hear, can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'll just be very brief. I totally am in favor of allowing people to do work in their accessory buildings on their property. I have no problem with that. I'm just concerned about the way it's written. I think that the term occupation in our bylaws unfortunately can mean two things. One is sort of residing, and one is, in this sense, more like vocation and like working. And so I, although our board, the Select Board, voted in favor, I abstained, and I'm just concerned about the way it's drafted, and it may cause some confusion. And the way I understand it is no one's being sort of charged with some zoning violation if they're doing their remote work above their garage currently. So with all due respect to the Planning Board, which I have great respect for, and all due respect to our town planner, with whom I have also great respect for, I just sort of wonder, A, if this is as urgent as would justify a warrant article, and secondly, I'm just concerned about the terminology, and if we're going to be suggesting a change to 3.2.1, we might want to modernize the word occupation. we might want to modernize the word occupation and also to minimize confusion with residing. So in any event, I won't belabor this any further. Thank you to all the proponents, but I'm just concerned about the way it's written. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Further on the question, Ms. Van Aken. Precinct Four, Candace Van Aken.
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My concern was with the signage that, other than one sign not to exceed two square feet in an area non-illuminated, the purpose of the sign is that it would be seen from the street. And my concern is, is that that would be a major change to our streetscapes, the way, the appearance of the town from the street with the possibilities of these signs. Is, am I reading this incorrectly or my concerns valid?
In response to the town meeting members' question about whether or not this bylaw is allowing us to have signs in front of our homes announcing Peter Haley, poet, and the like. Mr. Zekely, on behalf of the, as the town planner, with respect to the concern that the town meeting member has raised about signage?
That is correct. That, so we did not change that. So that's currently in the bylaw right now where you would, if you were having a home occupation, you would have the right to have a sign. It would be only obviously in the main residence. But, so we are not changing that and that. Ms. Van Aken is correct that you would allow, anyone would be allowed to, if they so desired, to apply for and put a sign on the property.
The town planner notes in his remarks that they'd be applying for the sign. So that would presumably provide us notice of any increase in the signage as well as an opportunity to respond on an individual level. Town Council, Mr. Mercorius, did you want to weigh in here?
Mr. Zekely already covered it. That is not a part of the bylaw that's changing, that's existing. There's also, just to the earlier point, home occupation is defined in the bylaw as well and with several references that suggest employment, et cetera. So I take Ms. Welch's point, but both are, I think both are existing features of the bylaw, not new ones.
Thank you, Mr. Mercorius. Further on the question, Roger Wilson, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I, Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion that we strike the Number One in the, that requires that the person be a member of the family to be engaged in such an operation. My reasoning here is simply that if you want to practice law and hire a full-time nanny and whatever other services you may want to hire to come into your home, that's perfectly legal. But if you wanted to conduct your business out of your home, practice law out of your home and hire somebody to come in and help, according to this, it's not legal. And while we're modernizing with respect to the accessory building, I think we ought to modernize with respect to the members of the family residing on the premises.
So, Mr. Wilson, as the Chair understands, you are making a motion to amend the motion by deleting from Section 3.2.1, Paragraph Number One, that says, "No person other than members of the family residing on the premises shall be engaged in such occupation."
That's correct.
Is there a second? Yeah, if you want to second this motion, could you please, actually, it looks like Mr. Conti and actually another town meeting member has seconded. So we have a second. So this now brings us on to vote on the motion to amend Article Four. It's a, the amendment itself is debatable. The amendment proposed by the town meeting member is to delete from this Article 3.2.1, the Paragraph Number One, "No person other than members of the family residing on the premises shall be engaged in such occupation." And that amendment, as the proponent indicated, would allow other people outside the family to carry out work on the premises, which is otherwise in conformance with 3.2.1. So further on the question, the Planning Board Chair, Heather Von Mering, Ms. Von Mering.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The one issue that I have, and obviously I can't speak to the Planning Board given the circumstance to get their full input. But the one issue, we have talked about this. First of all, family is not defined in our bylaw. You define who your family is and who resides with you and what defines your family. But when you go and you allow others that don't reside on the premises, you are now bringing traffic and you're bringing parking. And so at this point, I would recommend not changing it. However, if there is interest, the Planning Board hereafter, after town meeting, will look into what that means and what the impact of that is to the neighborhoods and the parking situation when you're bringing in outside people from outside of the residence into this, into your home. So I would recommend not proceeding with that change at this time, but the Planning Board is happy to look into it and give more information to town meeting at a later date.
Thank you, Ms. Von Mary, the Planning Board Chair and the proponent indicating that the Chair of the Planning Board would be opposed to the amendment as made. So Mr. Lou there, who's been waiting patiently, if we could elevate him. And we're now, this is now a debate on the motion to amend. Debate on the motion to amend by deleting Number One, Mr. Lou?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, I, actually, my question was not on the debate, the motion for amended the one. I just have a quick question to either Planning Board or the Select Board. Was there any reason initially there is a Paragraph Four that does not allow the home occupation in an accessory building?
So the, and Mr. Lou, if you could maybe mute there. But the town meeting members' question, which was a little hard to hear, was what was the reason for the original deletion of no home occupation shall be conducted in any accessory building? The question was to the proponents. The speaker indicated the Select Board, but allow the Planning Board or Mr. Zekely to respond to that if they can do so?
Sure, yeah, I'll try. So this article is taking that out. I believe the question is, why was it there in the first place? This, I, you know, I don't, I don't know why it was there in the first place in terms of the legislative history. But I think the idea was the idea of expanding the outside of the home space for non-residential use. And it wanted to be limited because, for whatever reason. But in terms of the legislative history or how that was debated on why, I can't speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Zekely. Ms. Von Mering, any further color on that from the Planning Board side?
At this time, no. We have no more historical information on why that's there.
Okay, thank you very much. Further on the question, Carol Savage, could we please elevate Ms. Savage to allow her to speak? John Lakeview. She might be in five, actually. But she's five. Ms. Savage is hiding in our directory as Massachusetts Moms Demand Action, which is why we're having a hard time elevating her.
Sorry about that.
We should have known, Carol. So we're on debate on the motion to amend Article Four by deleting Paragraph One of 3.2.1, which limits the use of the premises of family members. On the motion to amend, Ms. Savage?
My apologies for the confusion. So I just want to clarify. So we are looking at language that already is in the bylaw and we're looking to change it, right? So by.
Yes, the current, the current bylaw has a limitation that we are expanding it, but its original limitation was that only family members residing on the premises are allowed that use. So even by expanding the use, the family limitation still remains. And accordingly, Mr. Wilson's proposed amendment to four would remove the family limitation.
Okay, so I guess my question is, I don't think I'm in favor of removing the family limitation. I am very much in favor of clarifying that a family that wants to use an accessory building as office space, especially during this pandemic, should be a permissible use. So I would be in favor of that. I am a little confused by the Number Seven in the original language, why the barber shop, beauty shop, and mortuary are not permitted. Specifically, those strange little exceptions to the rule are in there. So I, you know, I don't know that that's relevant to this motion at all, but I would be curious to know what, what this position is on that if we are changing this. Why would, would those three be in there? So I, so I wouldn't want to remove the family member use because I think using it as a home office is a terrific idea and residents should have that option. So I think I am not in favor of this amendment and I am probably in favor of the main motion. But I would be curious about this point, Number Seven.
Thank you very much. The town meeting member speaks against the amendment, but asks the town planner to speak to his resistance to home embalming. Mr. Zekely?
I was hoping someone was going to ask why we can't have a mortuary or a beauty salon. So Number Seven is an existing provision that does not allow hair salons and mortuaries. I think mortuaries for the obvious reason and I think hair salon simply because of turnover traffic. So the idea is that, you know, so when that was created, you know, it was really related to traffic.
So Janice Gens, further on the question, elevating Ms. Gens?
Yes, thank you very much. I also understand the spirit of this article and agree with it. My question really is, why have we increased the size by adding 25% of the dwelling unit plus accessory building? I'm in agree with people wanting to use over garage space for home offices, but do we, would this encourage people to construct accessory buildings or office, you know, larger ones for office use? So the question is, why are we increasing the space?
So in response to the town meeting members' question about whether or not Paragraph Two affects and increases space, the Chair's understanding of Two, which may be wrong, was that Two primarily was a limit on the space? Mr. Zekely?
Correct, so currently, you're only allowed to use 25% of your dwelling unit for office space. And what this is doing is, since before it didn't count the total square footage of all buildings on the property, it just counted the dwelling unit. This, since we're allowing it, or we're trying to allow it over in accessory dwelling, in accessory structures, we wanted to combine so the total was, would be the same. So right now, it's the total square footage of the house and the change would be the total square footage of both structures in order to limit the amount of office space allowed.
Further on the question, Michael Galvin, Mr. Galvin?
I have the same question. So that's, you wouldn't be increased, they couldn't build a larger dwelling, accessory unit. They would have to still be, the size of the accessory building would still be limited somewhere else. This is just the usage within the buildings?
Mr. Zekely in response?
It's just the, so what we're limiting is the amount, not of the structures. It's the amount of the space between either structure that is used for an office use or an occupational, a home occupation. So it's, it's not the size of the structure that we're limiting. It's the amount within the structure that we're limiting.
Further on the question, Mr. Kilborn, John Kilborn?
Hi, John Kilborn, Precinct Three. I would like to speak against this amendment. I know a couple of residential homes in, near my neighborhood that appear to have businesses operating that family members are not attending, are not present, at least that appears to me. So I think that this could result in unintended consequences of converting residential buildings into, into de facto businesses. And so I think that this, the language that is struck is currently in the, currently in the zone, in the code and is not part of the proposed amendment. So that, I also think it should have further consideration prior to, prior to being struck. So I recommend that we vote against this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kilborn. The town meeting member speaks against the amendment. So we're continuing debate now on the amendment. The amendment is to remove Article One. So if you are in the queue, and there are quite a number of you in the queue on the amendment, if your issues on the amendment have been addressed, please cancel your request to speak. And otherwise, we're moving through now debate on the amendment. Jason Lee, town meeting member, Mr. Lee, on the motion to amend, Mr. Lee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? Just want to make sure. Okay, great. Yeah, I recommend that we keep Article One for the precise reason that I believe somebody else already noted, which is the concern of basically switching a residential property over to a commercial property if you don't limit who can occupy the space to people who already live on the property. Fully accepting that there is some interest in working with other people, but as we're all doing that remotely, this, this first point seems to make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, speaking against the amendment. Mr. Nixon on the amendment? Chris Nixon, he may already be elevated someplace.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. You hear me okay?
I can, yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. So I have a question, a general question that's really germane to both the amendment from Mr. Wilson as well as the main motion. I'm leaning towards supporting the motion to amend, but I would. but I would like to just better understand actual genesis of Article Four, if perhaps the plan representative of the planning board or select board could share with us. Have there been concerns or complaints from Winchester citizens relevant to this issue? Or is this, has Article Four come about because we have a proactive and communicating select board and planning board trying to get ahead of something? I would appreciate just better understanding of where this comes from tonight. Thank you.
The town meeting member is asking whether or not there have been the genesis of this article, whether there have been complaints or this is just proactive activity. So in response to the request that it be addressed by the planning board or the select board, Mr. Galiboff is in our queue here. So Mariano, do you want to address the question Mr. Nixon has asked about what the genesis of this was? And then also, you may speak generally to your position on the motion to amend. Mr. Galiboff.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From the standpoint of the select board, this is being proactive. We, we haven't heard complaints, but I can't speak for the planning board. I wasn't the queue to speak specifically about the amendment. The select board has not taken a position since it was just proposed. My issue is that the zoning bylaw in Section 3.3.5, it already has, it already rules on employment of non-residents and specifically talks about an employee of a home occupation. So it appears to me that somebody having a home occupation can already have an employee. But the lead, the amendment deleting Section One would mean that not only would that be allowed, but also that somebody could rent an accessory building to other people to have, to two, three, five people to have their own occupation in that accessory building and not be as part of the home occupation of the homeowner. So I don't think that that's something that we want to consider without further considerations. At this point, I would say to, I would ask the town meeting to vote no on the amendment and yes on the underlying motion.
Peter, you're muted.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Betancourt from the select board on the motion to amend, Mr. Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, I concur with Select and Galiboff on our position of supporting Article Four in its current form and voting no on the amendment. But we did actually, really since the pandemic started, we did receive several requests that came in through the town manager's office and through the building department from residents that were now working at home and really couldn't. And on the town side, this was something that we really weren't enforcing and we didn't have the ability to enforce either. So this was a kind of a common sense change, change for us. And the, the planning board kind of ran with it. We actually tried to make the, make the change unilaterally when the pandemic started. And then town council told us that we can't do that. So we, that's, that's why it's here, but it did come from several residents. And it seemed like something that made sense for us in the form it's presented. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betancourt. In response to Mr. Nixon's question, he also asked for some input from the planning board. Ms. Von Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Brian actually probably could talk to this as well. We spoke to the zoning enforcement officer. Through the years, a lot of residents have been putting what many would call home occupations in their accessory buildings, but just labeling them other things on their plans such as rec room, playroom, all sorts of things, but they really were have their desk and their offices in that space. And so this really for us is more cleanup. I don't think it hits that, as Brian noted from the planning board's perspective, we don't see it as a change in what actually everyone's already doing. It just makes it so they don't, they can call it what it is. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. Further on the question, town meeting member Catherine Bauer. Ms. Bauer. Is she elevated? So we're encountering some difficulty in, oh, there you are. On the motion to amend. So on the motion to amend, the proponent of the amendment, Mr. Wilson, has asked to speak. Mr. Wilson. Roger Wilson. He should already be elevated. Roger, are you on mute? Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. It's very difficult to discuss this in, in this format, but this is not a theoretical question for me. I have started several businesses and I think starting a business and employing people is something we should encourage. And it may not be the, the, it may be impossible to debate it sufficiently here, but there's substantively no difference between somebody hiring household help and hiring for a business in terms of its impact on the neighbors. And, and I see this in my own neighborhood. I can't believe that I'm the only person with this concern. But I think we should just proceed to a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Further in the question, Sheri Winkleman, Ms. Winkleman. Ms. Winkleman.
Hi, Sheri Winkleman, Precinct Eight. I think Roger Wilson raises some very good points. However, I think this motion does not really give town meeting a chance to, or the planning board to really think through the consequences of just simply eliminating Article or Paragraph One. So I would vote against this motion to amend, but I think that the planning board really should take this up for the next year so that they can come up with proper language that addresses today's working environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Winkleman. There has been a motion made to move the question, which gets elevated. So a motion to move the question is to close debate and allow no further debate on the motion to amend. So if we pass the motion to close debate, then we'll then immediately proceed to a motion, to a vote on the motion to amend without further debate. And then once the motion to amend is decided, we will return to the main motion as either amended or unamended. So before the meeting at this time, a motion to move the question, or as it appears on the V voter screen, close debate, allowing no further debate on the motion to amend. Motion to terminate debate. Ballots will be open on V voter screen for 30 seconds. Please vote yes to terminate debate, no to continue debate on the motion to amend. Majority vote, or two thirds vote, I'm sorry.
Peter, you're so, you're muted.
Thanks, Mariano. In my next job, this won't be a problem. So 154 members of the town meeting having voted on the motion to move the question, 103 required for passage, 148 having voted affirmatively. Debate is terminated. This is now a vote on the motion to amend. So on the motion to amend, we would delete from 3.2.1 of the Winchester zoning bylaw, the clause that says, "No person other than members of the family residing on the premises shall be engaged in such occupation." This is a majority of vote. If you vote yes, we'll then proceed to a motion, a vote on the motion as amended. If you vote no, we'll return to the original form of the motion for further debate and a vote. So on the motion to amend, those wishing to adopt the amendment by deleting Paragraph One of 3.2.1, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Ballot will be open for 30 seconds. On the motion to amend, a majority vote, 35 having voted affirmatively, 123 against the motion to amend. The motion to amend fails. This brings us back to Article Four as originally stated by the planning board and select board. Proceeding on Article Four. Further on the question, Lance Grenzaback, Mr. Grenzaback. We elevate Mr. Grenzaback. Lance. Mr. Grenzaback.
Mr. Haley, my comment was on the proposed amendment. I would favor the main article and striking number four.
Thank you, Mr. Grenzaback. So if you were going to speak on the amendment, please just press cancel your request on the main motion on Article Four. Nathan Rome, Mr. Rome. Mr. Rome. On the main motion.
That I'm in favor of number one, but I would limit the number of non-residents working on the premise that at any given time to one person additional to family members.
So the, the debate on the motion to amend has been concluded. The town meeting has rejected the amendment. So this brings us back to the main motion, Mr. Leo, Heidi DeLeo. Mr. Leo. Mr. Leo. Heidi, on the main motion. Heidi's gone missing, watching the Pennsylvania vote count someplace on CNN. Heidi, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me at all?
Just very faintly. Go ahead. I'll restate your comment.
Okay. Sorry. I, I have a question about if this passes, well, in general, home offices, how does it impact the tax rate? And is, are we deriving any commercial revenue from people having businesses out of their home, number one? And number two, I really think that there needs to be much more thorough discussion about what should actually be contained in this article before we even bring it to a final vote.
Thank you, Mr. Leo. Further on the question, response to the town meeting member's comments, which were, she believes that further debate is required before the matter is presented to the town meeting. But her original question is, what impact, if any, will this have on the tax base? Mr. Zakelli, town planner. Mr. Zakelli.
Yes, I'm unaware of how this would affect the tax base. Someone would have to have a business certificate of some kind to be doing business as, you know, in town. But I don't, I don't know how home occupations are currently taxed, to be honest.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. Mrs. Kelly, town planner does not perceive any impact on the tax base, but admits to the limit of his knowledge. Obviously, he's not an elected official. The, so this brings us to the vote on Article Four. Article Four, as originally presented to the meeting, is on page five of the Fall Town Meeting Book, presented by the planning board and the select board. This is a two thirds vote, two thirds vote required. Balloting will now be open on Article Four in its original format. All those in favor of Article Four, please vet, vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Balloting will be open for 30 seconds on Article Four. Two thirds vote. On Article Four, voting is now closed. 154 members of the town meeting having voted, 103 required for passage, 128 having voted in the affirmative, 26 in the negative, Article Four passes. This brings us to Article Five. Article Five is brought by the planning board as well. We will listen to a presentation by the chair of the planning board, Heather Von Mary, on Article Five, under Article Five. It's moved and seconded, the town approved Article Five as printed in the warrant. The material is set forth on page seven of the Fall Town Meeting Motion booklet. And we will now hear from Ms. Von Mary. These are the articles dealing with the West Core, so-called West Core issues. On Article Five, Ms. Von Mary from the planning board.
Thank you, town. Members of town meeting, before we begin on Article Five and then six thereafter, I want to acknowledge that the backgrounds of these two articles in your packets are super dry and head straight to the technical language. As a planning board's responsibility is to advise the town meeting on the zoning and land use of the town of Winchester, I feel the background fell short on the vast amount of information we have to share with you tonight. I plan to take the next few minutes of your time to share that additional knowledge with you. When the Center Business District zoning section was created, it was an enormous amount of work and contained an exuberant amount of technical information. It was approximately 34 pages in the zoning laws. At that time, the zoning bylaw broke the Center Business District into four core sections. However, zoning is not stagnant and the board at that time recognized to town meeting that it would need modifications as we proceeded in time. This is typical and expected. During the past year, the planning board realized that our zoning bylaw, with only four cores in the Center Business District, was misleading. Developers, architects, and owners use our zoning as a starting point to guide them through the conceptual design and permit and application process. However, the height allowed through the special permit process was not achievable on the west side of Main Street, given the special permit criteria. Is the area that I have highlighted in yellow. in yellow. Here's the rotary in the center of town, the train station running through the middle, and this is Main Street, which leads to North Winchester with the west side of Maine not currently achieving the heights that are written. In response, our objective with this article is to create a subzone, a west core that reflects an appropriate height that can meet the special permit criteria, section 9.4.2 of the zoning bylaw, which is evenly applied to all special permits throughout the town of Winchester. All uses will remain the same. The other objective is to rectify a uniformity issues in the maps as brought to our attention by legal counsel. For the special permits, we use a criteria written into the zoning bylaws and debated and voted on by you, the town meeting, to weigh the projects that come before the special permit granting authorities, whether it be the zoning board of appeals for all areas of the town outside of the Center Business District, which is the planning board. The criteria used is community needs, traffic flow and safety, which includes parking and loading, adequacy of utilities and other public services, impacts on neighborhood character, including building form and materials, architectural features, and patterns and proportions, adequacy of screening and buffering, impacts on the natural environment, including topography, fiscal impacts, and impacts on historical resources. Boards and commissions also provide us recommendations that have weight and we see as valuable addition, additional information on the criteria. In the Center Business District, site plan review standards are also applied to all projects before the special permit granting authority. So any projects in the west core area would want to achieve the height, as it's currently stated as 66 feet in the zoning bylaw, need to meet the site plan and special permit standards. I'd like to draw your attention to number 10, which specifically states consistency with character and scale surrounding buildings, Center Business District areas, and neighborhoods. To further note, the special permit process is quasi-judicial. The planning board's role is to apply the zoning bylaw as it is written and intended to the application. When specifically looking at the west side of Main Street, Joe's, Ruger's, Perrings, Liquor Junction, Fells Hardware, name a bunch of businesses in this area, in more depth, it became apparent that applications who attempted a great height, a height greater than 59 feet, could not successfully meet the standards and intentions of the zoning bylaws. In this slide, I am showing you pictures of buildings that currently are in the surrounding area and in this proposed new core and their respective heights. The historical buildings in this area are all 44 feet and under and three to two and a half stories in height. The newly-built condominium at Elmwood, which residents have expressed their surprise by the massing, is just under 47 feet tall. Can you imagine other two stories on this building? Two more stories would bring you to 66 feet. Buildings of a height of 66 feet will struggle with providing adequate parking, given the floodplain implications and limited site sizes. Would impact traffic and visibility, would impact the surrounding neighborhood's character, including the building form and proportions, would impact the natural topography of the hillside, would significantly impact the historical resources, specifically the historical neighborhood behind, referred to as Vine Street, is not in any way consistent with the character and scale of the surrounding buildings and neighborhoods on this side of Main Street. It is of the opinion of the planning board members that the height would be so overbearing that this criteria could not be met. Many times when I come before a town meeting, I discuss expectations and delivery. Developers use our zoning to outline the expectations for their delivery. However, it is unfair to a development team to spend a dollar on investigating a height, which we know will not get them to a deliverable that can meet the zoning bylaw's special permit criteria and site plan standards. In response, the planning board is not becoming, is not coming before you to advise town meeting to reduce an opportunity, as the opportunity does not exist. They asked town meeting to clarify the heights in the zoning bylaw so that the opportunities are realistically stated and therefore can be deliverable. It is important to note that all proposed projects in the areas in discussion today are conforming under the recommended new zone and height, including the proposal before the planning board in hearing on the Fells Hardware site. In this image, I show what is being proposed, which is the brown building, and the massing shading in blue would be if it was 66 feet. In summary, we are advising town meeting to adjust the boundaries of the town common core to address the flaws in different dimensional requirements in the map. The map that I'm showing you redraws the lines on all the green properties, which are already defined as town common heights, but are inside, set inside the north core. This is a recommendation as provided to us by town council. We are also advising the town to consider an additional core in the Center Business District named the West Core. This will reduce the special permit height in this area from 66 feet to 59 feet and keep the north core, which is on the east side of Main Street as is. The byright height in the west core will remain the same as 45 feet. This brings amassing and impact to the community into a feasible manner so that the projects coming before us can meet the special permit criteria and the site plan standards. Thank you for your time and dedication to our town. The town planner and I look forward to any questions you may have through the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. von Mering. May we have a recommendation from the Select Board?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator? Thank you. Yeah. I saw in the, in the presentation, I sent an email with the recommendation from the Select Board to all town meeting members. If, if you look at the email, there's pictures of two buildings that I saw the previous presentation included all the buildings around the area that is proposed to be downzoned, except for those two buildings. If you look at the memo there, there's a six-story building on Elmwood, there's a five-story building next to it on Elmwood, and then the new two-and-a-half-story condominium, which was in the presentation, but these two buildings are not. So to say that a 65-foot building would be incongruent to the neighborhood, it's just not correct. This is literally Main Street. This is where we expect to have businesses. This is where we, we have been trying. The Select Board in conjunction with other boards has been trying to improve the vibrancy of the town center, help the small businesses that are there by encouraging mixed-use development, by having more people who can live within walking distance of our town center businesses that are struggling so much, and also walking distance of mass transit so that there isn't as much traffic generated. So the Select Board voted four to one to recommend that town meeting vote no on this article. This is just also not the right time to be doing this. There, there's really no urgency, and we could wait until we have an in-person town meeting to have a better discussion on this. But given that it's here, we voted four to one to recommend no.
Thank you very much, Mr. Golybough. The Select Board votes four to one against acceptance of Article 5. Further on the question, Mr. Conti? Tony Conti? Oh, I, let me, and I apologize, Tony. The, we do have requests for members of the public to speak this evening on five and six. It's ordinarily our procedure to take a vote on allowing non-town meeting members to, to speak, although in the chair's recollection, we've never rejected that request from the chair. So it's moved and seconded on a voice vote that we allow non-town meeting members to speak. All those in favor? Aye, motion passes. So further on Article 5, we've had a request to speak this evening from the Winchester Chamber of Commerce through, I believe it's current president, Craig Robbie. Craig?
Thanks, Peter. I just realized I need to update my picture here. Yeah, once again, this is Craig Robbie. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, by lowering the height, as Mariano mentioned, up to 45 feet, does not make it economically feasible to develop in the mentioned areas and bring the needed affordable housing to Winchester, in the very place where we're trying to encourage the development and affordable housing. So lowering it to 45 feet, in our opinion, does not make sense. And by unanimous vote of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we recommend unfavorable action on Articles Five and Six and ask that you vote no on Articles Five and Six. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Robbie. We've also had a request to speak from John Stevens, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the chance to speak to town meeting tonight about article number five. I am John Stevens. My spouse, Mary Sue, and I have lived at 44 Vine Street since 1990. Our children, all five, have also lived at 44 Vine from time to time. Four of them were graduated from Winchester High. Mary Sue has lived in Winchester for more than 60 years. I have lived here for more than 40 years. I speak tonight to ask each of you to vote in favor of Article 5. Our home at 44 Vine is located in that area of mostly single-family homes found on Vine Street and Wedge Pond Road. This area is sometimes referred to as the wedge because it is wedged between Main Street to the east, the first congregational church to the south, Wedge Pond to the west, and the residential condominiums at 666 Main Street to the north. Article 5 is of particular interest to us and our neighbors because this article will apply to that section of the north core on the west side of Main Street, a section of the north core, which is immediately adjacent to the wedge. And just as a side note, I saw Mr. Golybough's letter to town meeting or emailed to town meeting, I responded because in fact, although he states, as I understand it, that the west core is not about the homes on Vine Street, in fact, it does. Just to continue on, within the Central Business District now are four different subzones, each with different zoning rules. The reason for these subzones is to set different zoning rules for each because the properties in each of the subzones vary in dimension, character, and use, and in their proximity to adjacent residential areas. As you've heard from Planning Board Chair von Mering, the adoption of Article 5 would reduce the maximum height by special permit on the west side of Main Street from 65 feet to 59 street, and will have no effect on the height limits on the east side of Main Street. The reasoning, excuse me, the rezoning for the west side is necessary because of the significant differences in scale and character between the properties on the west side of Main Street and those properties on the east side. On that note, that portion of the north core on the east side of Main Street has no residential uses. On the other hand, that portion of the north core on the west side of Main Street has some residential uses. The north core on the east side of Main Street is not adjacent to any area with residential uses, whereas the north core on the west side of Main Street is immediately adjacent to homes in the wedge. It is entirely appropriate for the zoning bylaws of the town to have different rules for the west side of Maine as opposed to the east side. In fact, such a difference in height limits fits precisely into the purpose for zoning bylaws. Considering the difference in the uses of the property to the west side of Maine as compared to those on the east side and the character and scale of the residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent to the north core on the west side of Maine, one can only conclude that the Winchester zoning bylaw should be amended to apply different dimensional rules on the west side of Main Street as opposed to the east side. Such a difference in the rules is sensitive to and reflects the character and scale of the immediately adjacent residential neighborhoods. The Chair of the Planning Board referred to the general standards for site plan review, consistency with character and scale of surrounding buildings, CBD areas, and neighborhoods. The Design Review Guidelines, elements of form, includes height and bulk of buildings should be configured to minimize their visual dominance, among other things, affecting the public street open space system and bordering neighborhoods. Again, the zoning bylaw now has recognized that the adjoining neighborhoods are important. The need for adoption of the amendment proposed by Article 5 is particularly clear if one compares the height limit in the north core to the current height limits in the museum and the town common. We see that both the museum and the town common have lower limits than the current north core limits. Why are the limits in those two zones, subzones, as low as they are? Presumably because the museum has residences within the boundaries and because the town common is immediately adjacent to the residential neighborhood on Dick Street. That same logic should apply to that portion of the north core, which is to the west of Main Street. It is, that section of the north core is immediately adjacent to the homes in the wedge. And even if town meeting adopts Article 5 tonight, the height limits in the museum and the town common subzones will still be lower than in the new west core.
Mr. Stevens, the meeting has a procedural limit on speakers of five minutes, other than the main proponents, and accordingly, the chair asks that you sum up at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I respectfully ask you to vote in favor of both Article 5 and Article 6. And whichever way you decide to vote, please know that I will respect your decision and do very much appreciate your service to the residents of Winchester by participating as a member of town meeting. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. We appreciate that. And Mr. Gerius raises a point of order. Mr. Gerius, your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, I appreciate the input of the non-town meeting members. I believe in the past, we have allowed the town meeting members to finish their debate before we allowed non-town meeting members to participate. And that's my point of order. I would, I would request that we allow town meeting members to speak first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerius. That is a practice that we have sometimes used. Part of the difficulty we find ourselves in at the moment is that the chair's ability to identify non-town meeting members visually has been eliminated, and accordingly, when they pop up in the screen and because they do not have access to our V voter system, it proved a little bit easier to, to do that. But I appreciate your point, well-made. And the chair has one further non-town meeting member speaker. So we'll defer her remarks until we've heard from those members of the town meeting. Further on the debate, Pam Court, Ms. Court? Still muted, Peter. Yeah, I was speaking to our, transition from the V voter opt-in is, requires us to yell across the table here. So we'll proceed, Ms. Court, we do, having trouble finding your name, you're probably logged into V voter under, or Zoom, you're logged into Zoom under something other than Pam Court. So if you could just type in what your name is, it looks like it might be Fire Tablet. So Fire Tablet. The chair will refrain from further comment. Ms. Court? Ms. Court on Article 5?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes, thank you. And I apologize for the delay.
That's okay, and I apologize for the name. I'm using the Fire Tablet for the first time, so it's a learning process for me. I have a question, just to hear from the one Select Board member who I have a question, just to hear from the one select board member who was in favor of this. If that select board member could speak as to why they were not, why, why they were not unanimous with, with the rest of their board members.
Certainly. So the Town Meeting member asked that we hear from the one side of the four-to-one vote, which was, I believe, Jacqueline Welch. Ms. Welch?
Thank you. I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Court. I very much appreciate the opportunity to respond to your invitation and also to address the wonderful Town Meeting and our Town Moderator and Town staff who work so hard on all of our behabings. I was about to sign up in the queue, so I very much appreciate this opportunity in this order. First of all, just very briefly, I did vote against the inconsistently with the rest of our board. I totally respect their votes, obviously, but I felt that my experience as a former Chair of the Planning Board and, and member of the Planning Board, and also I was a member of the Planning Board when, in fact, we drafted the Center Business District bylaws that this Town Meeting approved. And I will note that in my memory, while we were doing a lot of things, as our current Chair Heather Von Marion pointed out, when we were dividing up the different zones and cores, when it came to just the area just outside of Town Center, we sort of grouped that into one core, the West Core, knowing that there were certainly other fine points that would have to be addressed in the future, and that was one of them. We did have a lot of discussion. We were already, there were some issues, how many different sections to, to, to use in the division, et cetera. So there were a lot of different variables. So I completely respect and agree with our Planning Board Chair's comments that, that it was recognized when the Center Business District zoning was being drafted, that there were some other sort of fine tuning that, that would and might be necessary in the future, and I think this is one example. I very much respect the comments of Mr. Stevens, who lives in the neighborhood. There's no question that there's a neighborhood abutting the west side of the West Core, and that's an important consideration in zoning. It's, as he pointed out, it's a consideration in other areas that are, are subject to the Center Business bylaw, and it's certainly important here. I would also note that the recent development, as Chair Von Marion pointed out, is consistent with what's being promoted with Article Five. So not to belabor any longer, but I just felt my own experience in the drafting of the Center Business District bylaw, and also with what's happening now. I mean, obviously, we're all in favor of development in Town Center. There's absolutely no question about that. So if you vote in favor of Article Five, it does not mean that you're against development. In favor of developments, but in a consistent manner that also takes into consideration the contextual differences in different areas of our town, including topographical. I won't take any more time. Very much appreciate this opportunity to speak. Thank you, Town Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Welch. Somebody in the panelists didn't seem like they were muted, so if people could please recheck that. And so further on the question, Sherry Winkleman, the Chair's favorite member of the Winkleman Gerius household. Sherry Winkleman.
Hi, Sherry Winkleman from Precinct Eight. While I can appreciate the select board's notion of wanting to see lots of more, or should say more development in the downtown area, I think that the Planning Board has been taking the right approach in fine tuning those regions, because in fact, there is quite a difference between the two sides of Main Street. One does a but residences, one does not, and I think the reality is developers need clear guidance of what can be expected when they go before a permitting board. And if those permits are never going to be granted because of the strict requirements that the neighborhood be taken into account, then we should change the zoning to adequately guide developers so that they can start from a fair point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Winkleman. Further on the question, as we consider Article Five to establish the so-called West Core Zone, further in the question, Town Meeting member Stephanie Zerumba. Ms. Zerumba?
Hello. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I want to echo what our last two comments reiterated. I am in huge support of further commercial development in Winchester, huge support of greater affordable housing in Winchester. However, I think we need to really think about Mr. Stevens' remarks. We are all residents in Winchester, and we all represent residents in Winchester. We all own or rent property here, and I think we need to think through the rent or the mortgage we've paid to date and what we continue to pay, and how you would feel, having made that investment in your home, were a change like this to be made that feels like it is disregarding the look and feel of your neighborhood. It does a but the center of town, but it's a neighborhood with, with expectations, and it feels unfair to Mr. Stevens and his family and their neighbors to make a change that could potentially significantly impact their property. Thank you.
Further on the question, Ms. Ferrari?
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So my question is to, to Ms. Von Mirring. I was just wondering if there's any language in the articles related to the setbacks for any of these developments, not just their building heights. Thank you.
The Town Meeting member's question to Ms. Von Marion, the Chairperson of the back limitations, not just height limitations in this proposed designation. Ms. Von Marion?
Mr. Moderator, it's going to take me a minute because I got to go to the chart and the zoning. So do you, do you want to wait for me to get it, or do you want to go to another question? I'll get the answer and come back to you.
Sure, that's, that's, that's fine. Mr. Galvin? Michael Galvin, Town Meeting member on Article Five.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I, with all due respect to the last few speakers, I did walk this area, and this area of West Core seems to be on the base of a hill. The neighborhood seems to be uphill from this area, so if we were going to allow additional height anywhere in the town center, it seemed like the hill would protect the neighborhood from that additional height.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galvin. Further on the question, Mr. Gerius. Mr., oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Bettencourt. Mr. Bettencourt, further on the question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, I think Mr. Galvin's point is the one that I wanted to make as well. You know, we rezoned the Center Business District to attract developers to this area. There's always going to be a neighborhood on the other side of these developments that we're seeking to, to, to put in. Our consultant on the project that was engaged, as Carlon said, the Fels Hardware Project could go, should, should be going up another floor to to find the density that we've been seeking through the rezoning of the Center Business District. So it's completely appropriate to have more density there. I certainly appreciate Mr. Stevens' comments as well. I know that he is in the neighborhood, but when you walk through that neighborhood, you do see that there, the elevation and the grade is quite a bit different than other areas, so it's not a, a flat area where a big building is going to be in from someone's house. It's, it's very, it would be very consistent with the, the area and the the views from the top of Vine Street. They are completely protected from this building height that exists there, that was part of the CBD rezoning in twenty fifteen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bettencourt. Further on the question, Mr. Gerius. Mr. Gerius?
The least favorite member of my household, I guess.
Second favorite, Mr. Gerius. You're in second place. That's not bad.
That's not bad. So I want to, to focus in a little more on this actual area so that people understand the number of properties that are involved, and what actually height means. So this tiny little lot has an existing number of properties, which are six properties. Of those six properties, one, a number of them will never change from what they are now because of the nature of the properties. So for instance, the, the historic building which holds Joe's Pizza, that is never going to change. The Brugger Bagels Building, which now has a number of condos in there, is a very short building. That will never change because they're condos. It's possible that you can build something on the corner where the gas station used to be, but the biggest lot is the one which is now occupied by the liquor store, and there's another business in there I don't recall. That lot actually goes up the hill, and it's important to realize when you talk about the height of a building, you were talking about the height from the average grade. So you're not measuring from Main Street. You're measuring halfway up the gradient to Elmwood. So the height from Elmwood is much taller than you would expect because you're not measuring sixty-nine feet from Main Street. There's also a lot which is only accessible from Elmwood. And so what you're talking about is a multi-story building right on Elmwood, which is significantly up that hill, and it would definitely impact the neighbors on Vine Street because it would be at full height up their hill. So I think it's, it's important to recognize, we're talking about maybe three properties which will be impacted. The largest lot, which is the one which will probably not be subdivided, is one which will actually be higher than sixty-five feet because it have to be measured from the midpoint of the gradient. So the impacts on the neighborhoods are more significant than you might expect. Anyway, that's my point. I, as, I should note, I'm also on the Planning Board, but that's my personal opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gerius. Further on the question, Mr. Miller? John Miller? Mr. Miller? Yes. Mr. Miller on Article Five.
Sorry, sorry. Two, two brief points. I unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we're all set, John. Thanks.
Sorry. Two brief points. On, on the expectation argument, there's expectations in both directions. The, the proposal is to reduce something that people may have been relying, current owners may have been relying on for years. So it's, it's, it's a proposed reduction in the height. So that cuts both ways. That argument cuts both ways. People, you know, the, the guys have owned that property for decades. They have reliance too. So I'm not taking a side, but I'm just saying that it goes both ways. The other point that Mr. Gerius just made, that where the liquor store is now, that, that sloping lot, the, the more likely architectural solution is the shorter building in the back in the front, so they'd have one structure. So I think, I think you could hypothesize, you know, a sixty-five foot building, a ten-foot building in the front, but that's not likely. And it, I, I think we're getting so granular now in this that almost looks like we're targeting. The zoning should not be, and I don't think we want to be, zoning shouldn't be used to target one, two, or three properties, and I, that makes me generally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Further on the question, Mr. Conti. Tony Conti? Tony?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Moderator, let's hearken back to what the Chamber of Commerce told us. Winchester badly needs more commercial property. Over ninety percent of our tax revenue comes from residences. Those residences cannot support the, the type of, the quality of public services that Winchester residents demand. We need commercial property in this town. Everybody tells us, oh, yeah, we're in favor of development. We're in favor of affordable housing, but not, not in this place. Anytime anybody wants to do anything, oh, there's a reason why we can't do it. You know, realistically, if we make, if we downzone this property, we make it less attractive for development. And that is something that the town is, we're developing a very bad reputation as a, as a difficult place to do business, and that's, that's a problem. If we're going to generate the kind of revenues that commercial property can bring in, we have to make the town attractive to development, not discourage people from building in this, in this town. And everybody wants to see, you know, Winchester, we have to have the Cadillac version of everything, but nobody wants anything, any development that would generate the revenues necessary to have those Cadillac developments that everybody seems to desire. So I would ask that we vote favorably, excuse me, vote unfavorably on this proposal and encourage some badly needed commercial development in Winchester.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conti. So this brings us back to a question that was poised by Town Meeting member to the Planning Board about whether or not these proposed changes within the West Core would, in addition to height limitations, also affect changes in the setback. Ms. Von Marion?
No, the changes, I knew that before. The changes don't affect any of the dimensional requirements for setback, but I think she actually asked for the specific setback mentions, which is what I wanted to grab because I didn't want to misquote it. So the front setback from the property line is zero feet. You can go up to ten feet for a required ramp system with a special permit. The minimum side sitback is a party wall, unless you're boarding a freestanding historical structure, which then is five feet. The medium, the minimum rear setback is twenty feet from the rear property line with fifteen feet with a special permit. So those are the dimensional requirements for the setbacks for that West Core. There are also the dimensional requirements for the North Core as well.
Ms. Von Marion, while I have you, if I could ask your indulgence on something, the comments from Ms. Zerumba, the Town Meeting member, also were speaking to the comments that Mr. Stevens, the resident in, on Vine Street, I believe, made earlier. And her point was that we should respect Mr. Stevens' position as a neighbor, but in making that point, she said we shouldn't impose these changes upon him. I believe Mr. Stevens' remarks and the Planning Board are both joined in promoting Article Five in a way that, that would in effect create changes that the neighbors perceive as beneficial to them. Is the Chair's understanding of that correct?
Yes, the, the neighborhood has voiced that they are in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. So this brings us to one final comment from another non-Town Meeting member, Lucy Zhang. Ms. Zhang?
Hi, hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, I'm the, like, resident living on Fifty-One One Street, which is immediately adjacent to the North Core on the west side of the Main Street. I'm in favor of both amendment, the amendment to both Article Five and Six. I think I rely, because there's already a building just to face my kitchen. It's still currently being built, and like, as a, you know, neighbor, actually, I think all these, any of these buildings, all this like, like, all proposed, there's another proposed buildings. All this will change the whole area a lot. Not only the traffic, like, I think everybody cannot imagine, like, on our street, on Vine Street right now, if you want to just, want to park on the street, there's no space at all, no parking space. You have to, like, park on your driveway. If your friend comes with you, there's no way on the weekday. So this, this street will be pretty busy now, and if any proposed building not mention any height, will just cause this, like, whole area pretty, like, crowded. And like, okay, I think, I know, like, development of the CBD is unavoidable. So I think any, I, I think any future development should, like, any proposal should, like, be consistent with the character and scale of this surrounding area, and not influence the life, the life of the neighbors on this street. And so I'm in favor, I'm in favor of any reducing of the, like, height in any potential buildings. So I rely totally, you know, like, and this past year, the building facing my kitchens, like, noise, no mentioning the noise, no mentioning, like, if people beginning to move in, and also, like, one street, eh, like, at the crossing of Vine Street and Main Street, And also like One Street, eh, like at the crossing of One Street and Main Street, there's the like hardware store. Like during the rush hour, like before the COVID-19, like it the the car can block the whole like entrance to One Street. So, yeah, like, I really respect for ask the town meeting member to vote in favor of both like the Article Five and Article Six. I just want to like give the safety, keep the safe, keep the safety of the kids living here and like keep our life like quiet. That's just my own experience. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zhang, for taking the time to speak to us this evening. We appreciate that. Further in the question, Jason Lee, town meeting member, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee on Article Five.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a question about how many residents or how many homes will actually be impacted by the change?
The town meeting members' question is how many homes will be impacted by the change? Ms. Von Mary or Mr. Zekely?
I can tell you, I believe there's about 16 single families that are sitting on Vine, but that also will in positively impact. And we, the planning board has also received communication from the condo association that is exactly on Main. They are outside of the Center Business District boundaries, directly abutting Vine Street with their next door neighbor being the Fells Hardware. They also, they feel that they are, that this positively impacts them as well. And but I don't know how many units are inside that building.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. This brings us to consideration of Article Five. Article Five presented by the Planning Board and set forth on Page Seven of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. As motion having previously been made and second debate having been concluded, this is a two-thirds vote. Those in favor of the passage of Article Five and the establishment of the district as set forth in that article, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen where the ballot will be open for 30 seconds. We'll we'll leave this ballot open a few minutes. Sometimes if there's a period of time, it's necessary for you to refresh your V voter screen if you're having trouble voting. So we'll leave the balloting open for one minute instead of 30 seconds here. So if you're having a problem, just refresh your V voter screen and that should solve it. Voting having taken place on Article Five, two-thirds vote being required. 158 members of the town meeting having voted, 106 necessary for passage. 76 town members, meeting members having voted in the affirmative and 82 in the negative, Article Five fails. So this brings us to the consideration of Article Six. The chair had a question that he has conveyed to town council about whether or not Article Six stands by itself without the passage of Article Five. And accordingly, if the town planner or the, more appropriately, the chair of the Planning Board, Ms. Von Mary, wishes to exercise the opportunity to indefinitely continue Article Six, the chair would entertain the motion at that time if they believe it's appropriate.
It's unrelated to Article Five, so I'd like to continue. The presentation's two minutes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Heather. No problem on time at all. I just wanted to check in on that. So on Article Six, the chairperson of the Planning Board, Ms. Von Mary, and we'll listen to a presentation from her, Ms. Von Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting members. Article Six is a little easier to explain, given that the hearing question has already been heavily reviewed in Article Five. The objective of Article Six is to modify the zoning to better reflect the actual opportunities that exist in the area. In the Center Business District, there is an additional establishment of planned unit development areas. Many people refer to them as PUDs or PUDs. They are also known as overlay districts. PUD One includes the Waterfield Lot and the buildings surrounding Dags. PUD Three includes Converse Place and the building that CVS is in and the buildings around that area. And PUD Two is the east and west side of Main Street as you move through the rotary towards the north side of town. The area that we are discussing with you today is the west side of Main Street and is the area that is currently highlighted in yellow. The purpose of the PUD is to encourage a very large-scale development. However, to achieve these goals, there are very clear requirements that need to be met to proceed. First, the site must be, must meet the objectives of a minimal lot area of 25,000 square feet. This dimension was set as you cannot meet the objectives of the overlay district without having a large enough lot. No lot on the west side of Main Street currently has 25,000 square feet, even when assembled with an abutting property. Secondly, they must contain a mixed-use development, which is rather easy to achieve if it stood alone. Thirdly, they must have a substantial number of housing units. And fourth, they must provide a diversity of housing types, including rental and condo on the site, sizes of units, and support a wide range of ages and economic levels. It is when they reach all these requirements that the Special Permit Branding Authority can then consider authorizing additional height and floor area ratio, FAR, beyond the special permit standards. The lots on the west side of Main Street cannot meet these requirements to be considered. It is not achievable. We are advising town meeting to remove this area of PUD Two from the map to provide clarity and a cleanup of our zoning bylaws. Thank you very much, and I look forward to your questions through the moderator.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. I believe that those who spoke on Five were also speaking jointly to Six. But as a matter of clarity, may we hear from the select board to confirm that's the case?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, we also voted four to one to recommend a vote of no on this article for the same reasons. This is even less necessary than Article Five as it downzones a small number of properties.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scotty. Further on the question, Jaclyn Welch, Ms. Welch from the select board.
Hi, thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Conti's comment with respect to the last article, which perhaps he'd be making with respect to Article Six as well. Not a single amount, but I think he voices sort of a feeling of some where he indicates that the town needs development. So I just wanted to point out that, of course, the town needs development. And of course, all of us agree with that. But that doesn't mean that you should vote no on Six or Five for that matter. But in any event, I just wanted to point out in case some of you aren't aware, and this is all good, but within the last couple of years, you know, the condos above Bruegger's Bagel have been developed. There's a plan that's about to, I believe, be finalized soon, perhaps above Fells Hardware. There's also construction having, I think, just been completed on Elmwood. Some of the neighbors had spoken to this. That the Elmwood building, of course, has many units. And then, of course, there's been the RFQ and RFP process for the development behind Dagostino's, the town lot. There's also been a plan that seems to be kind of in the early stages, potentially regarding the the tall building near China Sky. Some refer to that as a laundry building. So I certainly don't want anyone from town meeting to have the mistaken impression that no one's for, that some folks are not for development, or even worse, that the development is not happening. In fact, it's really the opposite. In the last few years and certainly stretching to the next few years, the town's center, of course, we think it will be improved. And I agree with that because there will be more, you know, construction, more buildings, more foot traffic, more residents. It should vastly help the businesses. But it will be a lot. We have a lot coming in. And so I think that it is, you know, respectfully not accurate to suggest that Article Six and including Article Five for that matter would be anti-development and would result in no development. That's simply not the case, and it's simply not what's going on in town center over the next few years. Thank you so much, respectfully.
Thank you very much, Ms. Welch. Further in the question, Ms. Winkelman. Ms. Winkelman, town meeting member?
This is a question to the planning board. I just want, I just want clarification or confirmation that if you were to sum the properties on the west side of Main Street, it would, the total sum of those properties would be less than what is required for a single PUD in that area. If that's the case, I don't understand why the select board is opposed to making the zoning come in line with what is actually achievable. Thank you.
So Ms. Winkelman, a point of clarity for the chair. You began your remarks by saying you had a question for the planning board, but your question seems to be directed to the select board. Is that correct?
No, my, my, well, maybe it's two questions. My question to the planning board is, is it in fact the case that the sum of all of the properties on the west side of Main Street is less than what is the minimum required to create a PUD? And if that is the case, my question goes to the planet, to the select board. Why are they opposed to having the zoning align with what is actually achievable under the zoning bylaws? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Ms. Von Mary, in response to the town meeting members' question about the numerosity of the properties on the west side of Main Street and whether that number is fewer than required for the establishment of a planned unit development?
Yes. So for a PUD to qualify to get those up more heights, you need to have a 25,000-square-foot lot. So what what actually happened is originally when the PUD Two was created, you could assemble the lots to get a 25,000-square-foot over there. But what happened is since the PUD was done and the zoning was done, Bruegger's Bagels was built. And when Bruegger's was built, they did condos, and those condos have now been sold. And now they're owned in individual ownership. And then what happened is all the rest of the lots cannot be joined together to get that 25,000 square feet. So it is unachievable at this time on the west side of Main Street to achieve a PUD and to meet the qualifications for that. So it's really a cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. And the chair will entertain a response from the select board if it cares to make one to whether or not this amendment is in effect a cleanup amendment because the the number of units in the proposed locale, as it currently stands, is insufficient to constitute that necessary for the planned unit development.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I mean, there's a lot of, there's enough there to be 25,000 square feet. It might not be economically feasible right now. But that doesn't mean that the owners of those properties, who bought them when the zoning was one-way, wouldn't at some point in the future hope to use it the way the zoning was. And this is downzoning what they're allowed to do. If if it's the planning board's view that no development is possible, then certainly this is not necessary to be modifying and downzoning these properties.
Thank you very much. Further in the question, Mr. Jarius. Do you have Jarius? Mr. Jarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Precinct Eight also of the planning board. I think it's important to note that when you have a building which goes condo, you are, and you you're trying to imagine buying that property in order to assemble it into a larger lot. You are not dealing with a single owner. You're dealing with, I believe, in the case of the Bruggers Building or above the Elmwood condos, let's call them that, there may be six or seven owners there. So it is highly unlikely that this area will ever be able to be used as a planned PUD. And to leave it on the map as such in inviting developers to come in, we already have a fairly complicated development area within the CBD. And to leave something on the map which entices them with something which isn't realistically possible, I think is disingenuous. And in calling this downzoning, I think is the use of a loaded term. This isn't downzoning in the sense that we're trying to restrict affordable housing, which is usually the word, the way the word downzoning is used. I think that's an inappropriate way of looking at this. So I I I vote you, I urge you to vote for this. It cleans up our zoning map and makes it much clearer to developers what is possible. And I mean, that's the gist of this. We're not trying to prevent affordable housing or dense housing. That's a, that's an inappropriate way of looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jarius. Further in the question, Jason Lee, Mr. Lee, town meeting member? Mr. Lee?
Sorry, I just, sorry, apologies, Mr. Moderator. Just got permission to speak there. Isn't, I guess I wonder why we wouldn't leave the possibility of develop, basically leaving the zoning as it is so the developers can make the determination of whether or not it's economically feasible? If at some point we hope to achieve a very high density in that area, we would have to go through this exercise again if we want to change the PUD Two to the smaller area as proposed. I guess that's a question to the planning board?
The town meeting member question to the planning board is whether or not we shouldn't just leave the zoning as it is at this point for the reasons that he's articulated. Ms. Von Mary, in response to the town meeting members' question?
So the thing is, by the time it actually gets to a point where it might, you might be able to do it, at that point, the town would have gone through and hopefully the PUD would have been built up. The Waterfield Lot would be built up, Converse Place. And then we'd be reanalyzing the zoning and going through another round and another analysis. At this point, between now and whenever that may be, which originally when the planning board did the rezoning, the plan was 20 years. So when that actually happens, yes, there's, we would go back and rezone it. But at this point, it's not feasible for a developer. Our perspective is to, if you go and you tell a developer and they look at this, because this is like the roadmap, the zoning is the roadmap for what they can do. And they go and say, oh, look, we can do a PUT, BUD, PUD, and go send their architect out, they're wasting money because they can't do it. They do not have the square footage to do it. It's also misleading. And so we just think it's really disingenuous to give them false hope and to give them an opportunity to go spend money that they could put into other areas of their business.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. Further on the question, Ms. Lewis, Amanda Lewis?
Hi, this is Amanda Lewis, Precinct One. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I I just had a question. I I was wondering if the proposed building at Fells Hardware already fell within the definition of the planned unit development that we're discussing or if that is irrelevant? That's, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. In response to the town meeting members' question about whether the proposed Fells Hardware development is in contravention of this change or otherwise consistent with the existing zoning bylaw?
The Fells Hardware project that currently is before the planning board in the hearing process, it does, it is not coming under a PUD, and it is coming in under, it is also coming in under 59 feet in height. So it clears, and there is no change. It will not bring it into not conformity in any way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. So on Article Six proposed by the planning board, two-thirds vote being required. Debate having been concluded. Those in favor of Article Six, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your, the voter screen, where balloting will be open for 30 seconds. As a moderator's difficulty with his screen here at the moment. The 147 members of the town meeting having voted, 98 being required for passage, 90 having voted in the affirmative, and 57 in the negative. Article Six fails to pass. This brings us to Article Seven. Article Seven on page nine of the Fall Town Meeting motion booklet. Under Article Seven, it's moved in second as the town approved Article Seven as printed in the warrant. Two-thirds vote required. An amendment to the definition of national, of natural resource under Section 10 of the Winchester zoning bylaw. On behalf of the proponents, the town planner, Mr. Zekely has a presentation. Mr. Zekely's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are now going on to Article Seven to define an existing term, natural resource. The objective of this article is to provide a definition for an existing term that's already in the zoning bylaw. The existing term is natural resource. This is all in order to effectuate a new zoning provision that will contain that existing term in it, within the subsequent article, Article Eight. So the proposed definition that we have for this existing term in the zoning bylaw for natural resource is forests and all uncultivated flora, land, soil, and soil resources, lakes, ponds, streams, underground and surface waters, and minerals and natural deposits. This definition is based on the exact language that's currently in Massachusetts general law. That is all I have for this article. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zekely. On Article Seven, may we have a recommendation from the select board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The select board recommends favorable action by unanimous vote.
On Article Seven, further on the question as presented by the planning board through the town planner, Mr. Zekely. It's two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen, where balloting will be open for 30 seconds on Article Seven. 158 members of the town meeting having voted, 106 required for passage, 147 having voted in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, Article Seven passes. This brings us to Article Eight. Under Article Eight, which is on page 10 of the Fall Town Meeting warrant motion booklet, under Article Eight, it is moved in second to the town approve Article Eight as set forth in the warrant. The language is set forth on page 10 of the motion booklet, and the motion background appear on page 11. On behalf of Article Eight, its proponents, the planning board, through the town planner, Mr. Zekely. Mr. Zekely?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Now moving on to Article Eight, entitled waivers relating to natural and historical resources. The objective of this article is to offer more development options to landowners while supporting historical and natural resources. This is going to be possible through a new section 4.5. So here's an example of how Article Eight can work within the town of Winchester. A conventional subdivision or a large lot is planned for development and has a historical building, an ancient tree, or a large forest within its borders. A zoning waiver would allow the creation of a house on an undersized lot to support that resource of the historical building in order to save the building, or the stand of trees, or a large forest. So this would be a waiver to allow more flexible zoning on a lot in order to support the preservation of a historical resource or a natural resource. Another example would be an historic streetscape. They may have a row of houses, all built to the same setback close to the street that don't currently conform to the setback regulation. With the flexible dimension zoning that we're contemplating, a new house or a reconstruction of a missing house could be built in alignment with the existing historic buildings if that uniform setback is deemed important. One example of this is 88 Harvard Street. So this is a known historical resource in this historical house right here. It is on an undersized lot, so it currently would not be allowed to have even this two-family dwelling here. Waivers from zoning could provide a special permit process to create a new undersized lot in exchange for rehabilitating this historical duplex instead of demolishing it. So even though this lot is undersized, this provision would allow a new house to be created on this undersized lot, essentially in exchange for rehabilitating this historic duplex. So why are we using waivers instead of variances? So variances is a zoning application that are, that are used in order to build a structure that is outside of what is traditionally allowed. Variances are harder to receive than special permit due to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 48, Section 10. That says that the special permit granting authority has to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to soil, shape, or topography with relation to a variant. So the only way you could give a variant is if there's something specific on this lot that relates to soil conditions, shape, or topography. But it does not generally affect the zoning district as a whole. So it's basically saying that a specific lot is different than all the other lots in the zoning district. That's the only way to get a variant. So in the past, the town has granted such variances to create smaller lots in order to save historical structure, regardless of soil conditions or topography. So we aim to use the most appropriate tool in order to preserve natural and historical resource. But all we're trying to do is get away from the practice of using variances to, to allow for undersized lots or additions to be created that do not actually fall under the variant criteria. These are the, this is the full new Section Five, and it will allow either smaller frontage, a smaller lot width, or smaller area, a total lot area, or side and rear yard setback. So it will allow any of these things if there's a trade-off in terms of a preservation of a historic resource or a natural resource. And to keep going through the major highlights of this. So this will permit the preservation of the existing resource. And if there's, obviously, if there's going to be a subdivision afterwards in order to create a new lot, it would still have to go through that A and R process through the planning board, just like always. The planning board would also have to submit to the ZBA in an evaluation of the appropriateness of the design for the new structure, as well as an evaluation of the proposed development, whether the lot layout and designs constitute a suitable development for the neighborhood. And lastly, a recommendation for the granting or the denial of this special permit, including any recommendations for modification. So the historical commission, the design review, and the tree water, the tree warden, and the conservation commission, a conservation agent shall submit to the board at a written evaluation of the significance of that natural historic, natural or historic resource. Lastly, the special permit shall be granted under this normal Section 9.4.2 of the zoning board of appeals of the Winchester zoning bylaw. 9.4.2 is the standard special permit criteria that's being used.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zekely. On Article Eight, may we have a recommendation from the select board?
Mr. Moderator, the select board unanimously recommends favorable action.
Thank you very much. Further on Article Eight, Jack Lemonge. Mr. Lemonge?
I had done mute. I'm here. My name is Jack Lemonge. I'm the chair of the historical commission, and also a town meeting member from the sixth precinct. The Winchester Historical Commission unanimously recommends favorable action on Article Eight. We believe this new bylaw will provide us as a commission with a valuable alternative to offer property owners in our continuing effort to discourage demolition of historic properties. While the demolition delay provision contained in Chapter 14 of the town's bylaws enables the historical commission to buy time to work with property owners for mutually satisfactory outcomes, it does have its limitations. There are only so many alternatives to demolition to offer as we negotiate with property owners to renovate and/or add on to existing structures. Ultimately, if we fail to reach agreement, the property owner will be free to demolish the property at the expiration of the imposed delay, which in our mind is the least desirable outcome. We believe that the flexible zoning will give property owners an important alternative, a viable option toward an outcome that's good for the property owner while helping to maintain Winchester's historical built environment. The Winchester Historical Commission urges you to vote yes on Article Eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, John Serbier, who is the chairperson of the Winchester Housing Partnership Board, is asked to address this, Mr. Serbier.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Moderator. As a reminder, the Housing Partnership Board was created by town meeting to provide advice on housing that is appropriate for moderate and middle-income households. The Housing Partnership Board supports passage of Article Eight. The primary purpose of this article is to help preserve historic and natural resources. Passage will also help preserve smaller housing units that meet the needs of moderate and middle-income households. All of us have seen far too many smaller homes demolished and replaced by much larger and more expensive homes. Proposed provisions will help to preserve these smaller housing units. That's why we support passage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Serbier. Further in the question, Anne Sarah, Tomany member?
Hi, I was going to cancel, but I'll go ahead and say it. I just wanted to say that a variance actually includes structures. It's not just conditions of the soil and topography, and it also concerns conditions of the land, which could potentially be a forest or a natural resource. So in some ways, I view this as redundant, because I do think that you can use a variance to cover it. And in fact, I think that all other municipalities do use, do use the variance to cover the situation where you like, you know, a smaller lot or a strange-shaped lot in order to cover the situations that are proposed here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sarah. The motion comes before the town meeting, as previously stated by the chair. On Article Eight, it's moved in second to the town approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant. Two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen and cast your ballot, where the balloting will be open for 30 seconds on Article Eight. 153 members of the town meeting having voted, 102 required for passage, 143 having voted in the affirmative, 10 in the negative. Article Eight passes. Articles Nine and Ten were passed by us earlier this evening as part of the consent agenda. This brings us to Article 11. This will be our final article for tonight. Under Article 11, which is brought by the select board and proposes certain changes to the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws, the select board wishes to proceed on Article 11 as amended. And the amendment primarily makes a change to the definitional term "mechanical landscaping." As set forth originally on, in Article 11, on page 14 of the warrant booklet, mechanical landscaping was to include work performed by a property owner on his or own property. Now, the definition of mechanical landscaping has been changed to say it shall not include work performed by a property owner on their property and not for compensation. So those of you hoping to tell your partner that you couldn't mow the lawn because it was prohibited are now out of luck if this motion should pass because the select board has amended it. So we're now voting to amend the motion under Article 11. And the amendment, as read by the chair, provides that the following definition should be added in Chapter 23, Section 2 of the Winchester Code of Bylaws. The definition "mechanical landscaping," lawn and plant maintenance at a residential or commercial property using mechanical equipment such as lawn mowers, hedge trimmers, weed whackers, or leaf blowers on public or private property. Quote, "mechanical landscaping," close quote, shall not include work performed by a property owner on their own property and not for compensation or any agricultural, agricultural work. Revising Chapter 23, Section 3, so that it reads as follows, deleted language struck through, proposed language in bold, "Construction and mechanical landscaping shall be conducted only between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, weekdays and 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM Saturdays. No construction or mechanical landscaping is permitted on Sundays or holidays, except where permitted by state law, in which case, construction and mechanical landscaping shall be permitted only between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And three, adding the words "or mechanical landscaping" after the word "construction," wherever it appears in Chapter 23, Section 4, which defines particular exception to the town's construction noise bylaw." On behalf of the, so that's Article 11 and the motion to amend. So before we begin debate on the article as amended, let's take a vote on the motion to amend 11 by changing the definition of mechanical landscaping to exclude work performed by property owners on their own property. So those in favor- So those in favor of the motion to amend, please vote yes. Those opposed to the motion to amend, please vote no. V voter screen balloting will be open for thirty seconds to adopt the amendment as set forth by the Chair on behalf of the select board. Majority vote required, one hundred and twenty-two, having voted in the affirmative, nineteen and the negative, the motion to amend passes. Now, on Article eleven as amended and adopted by the meeting, Amy Shapiro from the select board, Ms. Shapiro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I know I'm keeping you all from watching more of the selection news, so I will be brief. But just a little history and Matt, I don't know if the, are you able to put the presentation up?
Yes, we're prepared.
All right, you can go to the next page, please. Thank you so much. So, so just a little history, as many of you probably remember, at fall town meeting four years ago, there was a noise bylaw that brought, that was brought before town meeting. And the details of the proposed bylaw were pretty cumbersome and included different types of noise, including nuisance noise of which mechanical landscaping was a part, stationary noise like HVAC units and construction noise. And the bylaw put decibel limits on each of the different types of noise. So it was very, very complicated and would have been very difficult to enforce. And therefore, in fall of twenty sixteen, that bylaw was voted down by town meeting. Next page, please. So Article eleven is an amendment to the construction bylaw that was added to the town bylaws in May of twenty eighteen. Its purpose is to restrict the use of mechanical landscaping equipment during certain times, primarily early in the morning and in the evenings to decrease the noise that many of us wake up to or eat dinner to each night. The article as amended permits landscaping contractors to use mechanical equipment, including lawn mowers, hedge trimmers, weed whackers, leaf blowers, et cetera, from seven AM to six PM on weekdays and nine AM to five PM on Saturdays. Outside of these times and Sunday or holidays, except where permitted by state law, landscape contractors cannot use mechanical equipment, but can do other work like raking, mulching, planting, et cetera. So the select board, as Mr. Moderator mentioned, voted to amend the original article in the following ways. We felt that the original article as written was too restrictive to homeowners. So the new article does not apply to property owners using their own mechanical landscaping equipment. We've also made the addition of leaf blowers to the list of mechanical landscaping equipment. Added the words or mechanical landscaping to section four of chapter twenty-three of the construction bylaw, which defines the exceptions to the bylaw. So to summarize, the amended article stipulates the time during which landscaping contractors can use mechanical equipment so as to address the early morning and evening noise that can be quite disruptive. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro. Ms. Sarah raises a point of order. Answer, Ms. Sarah, your point of order.
I had one before we were gonna vote because I wanted to talk before the vote on the, on the motion to amend, but it's over with.
Okay, thank you very much. Further the question, Mr. Nixon on the motion, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. So had it not been amended, I would have been opposed to it, just given how many working families and commuters are racing to catch that five-ten train to Lowell to get kids by six in Winchester and then have no time to cut the grass. So I appreciate the motion to amend and I'm glad that it passed. I just wanted to, and perhaps the Chair or a member of the select board or other town meeting members have a better recollection of this. It seems to me that the, the construction bylaw, which this seeks to amend, I remember quite a bit of discussion about this. And my memory was, as it was shared with town meeting, that in fact it excluded landscaping. I remember a lengthy conversation with Mr. Arico, who sought clarification on whether painting was to be considered a construction activity. So you know, given the exclusion towards homeowners, which I really appreciate, I do wonder if, if this is the right way to go about it. And I do appreciate sort of the impetus for it. My understanding and the limited conversation I caught on WinCam at the select board table, and perhaps Ms. Shapiro or Mr. Bettencourt could speak to this. Do we have issues with landscaping contractors going about their work, you know, before seven AM in Winchester? I don't see that happening on my street, but if that's really an issue that, that occurs elsewhere in town, perhaps this is the best way to deal with it. I'd just like a little bit better perspective of the importance of this and sort of what's driving it. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. In response to Tommy member's question about what has been the impetus for this particular article, whether the select board is aware of complaints or issues, Ms. Shapiro or Mr. Bettencourt?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, yes, we have received complaints about the noise. And in particular, on the landscaping contractor point, you know, their, their machinery is much more powerful and therefore much louder than the thing, the lawn mowers and leaf blowers that we typically use as homeowners. Excuse me, and we, we have seen issues particularly on the weekends coming before nine on Saturdays and certainly I see it in my neighborhood. And so it is, it is definitely a need. I think it may differ in different parts of Winchester, but it's definitely something that citizens of Winchester have brought to us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro. Further on the question, Mr. Jarius, do you have Jarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I hope you can help clarify my confusion here. I thought that we voted to amend the definition of mechanical landscaping, insert the word no, so that it would not include the property owner. But I noticed, and maybe, could you remind me whether that's the only thing we voted on?
So the, there, there were some cleanup changes made by council, but the primary change is, you're correct, is that the definition of mechanical landscaping previously said, mechanical landscaping shall include work performed by a property owner. The definition of mechanical landscaping now says, mechanical landscaping shall not include work performed by a property owner. And that was the substantive effect of what we voted on, which was to exclude these restrictions from application to property owners working on their own property.
So as a follow-up to that, I note that the language just presented by Ms. Shapiro included the word leaf blower, which is not in the motion that I see on the paper in front of me. And it also included the word no mechanical landscaping in section two. And the paper in front of me, it explicitly says that mechanical landscaping may be conducted on Sunday. So there were two additional changes to the article that we did not vote on.
Well, the, the change, the changes as read by the Chair did include the language that Ms. Shapiro had, which says no construction or mechanical landscaping. So we did vote on the changes that were presented by Ms. Shapiro. However, the Chair understands that the language is somewhat dense and that trying to listen to the Chair just read it is less than perfect. So if you, Mr. Jarius, or any other member of the meeting wished to raise as a point of order that this be voted on at our next meeting after the amendment language itself has been circulated so that people can have a more complete opportunity to review it and understand the motion is now amended, the Chair would find that point of order in order. And accordingly would, would adjourn and hold this over until Monday.
I would certainly appreciate that.
The
make that request.
The Chair will, the Chair will take that as the point of order, having been made.
Mr. Chair, may, may interrupt.
Of course, I was just gonna ask you, Mr. McCarras.
Sorry, my apologies, only because I will not be available Monday night. And I was, of, of the two of us on our team, the one who worked on this, I'd, I'd like to at least try to explain and answer Mr. Jarius's question briefly and
Of course. So I'm happy to have you do that. I do think that we're probably better served by having the debate and the motion on, on Monday. Because I think that procedural point is well made, but it would be helpful to us going into that, if you could provide us that background and information.
Yes, and I certainly appreciate the time, time needed to actually study it. So I appreciate that. But just wanted to at least explain that. First, Mr. Jarius is right. One of the additions was leaf blowers. It was in the list of examples. It would have been included by the definition. This is a non-exhaustive list. But in, in the comments received before town, before tonight, there's a suggestion that it was a glaring omission because that was one of the primary concerns. That's one, one change. The change in section two from the motion as presented, Mr. Jarius is right, there was a specific sentence about mechanical landscaping on Sundays. The reason for that was to give a more permissive treatment. When this did apply to private landowners, there was more permissive treatment on Sundays for landscaping as compared to construction, the idea being if you mow your lawn on Sunday, perhaps that should be treated differently than if you have a contractor come to do construction work. Since this no longer applies to private property owners doing their own work, that different treatment on Sundays was no longer necessary, since everybody's a contractor that'll be involved. The third change that I believe was noted was, there was, this I believe came from one of the committees studying this before town meeting was that there are certain exceptions, mostly for emergencies and public utilities, as well as at the town manager's discretion, town contracts for, to not be subject to the existing construction bylaw. And there was a suggestion that perhaps lands, mechanical landscaping should be there. So if a public utility needs to cut grass, cut tree limb, especially in an emergency, it would also be exempt. So that's, that's the nature of the three changes.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarras. We appreciate that and especially appreciate your assistance and draftsmanship on this, given the hour and the point of order, maybe by the time you remember, which the Chair finds very well made and in order. Accordingly, we'll proceed to a motion to adjourn and we'll continue our debate on Article eleven on Monday night. As a reminder, on Article twelve and thirteen, which will also reach on Monday night, we'll be hearing thirteen first and then twelve. We will hear eleven, get that out of the way right up front. So in the interim, we will send to all of you by email the amended language, which will give us all an opportunity to study it and refine our comments and questions for the proponents. Thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro, for the time you've put in on this. And we look forward to continuing our discussion on Monday. So now before the meeting is a motion to adjourn, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen and cast your ballot in the next thirty seconds on the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, having been adopted gratefully and unanimously. As we close, we'll continue on Monday evening at seven thirty in the same format, Zoom and V voter. I'd be remiss in not remarking again on how grateful we are to our friends at V voter, especially to the town clerk, who has done a heroic job this week with the national election and putting this all together. Please take a moment to thank her for that, under extraordinary circumstances, some of which are not evident to all of you. She's just performed heroically this evening. So we're grateful to her, to Mr. Griffin, and tonight to Sam Allison for all her great help. We'll see you Monday night. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Idon and you have just been watching the first session of Winchester's Fall Town Meeting here on November fifth, twenty twenty. It, of course, virtual via Zoom and V voter. This was the first session. So let's review what has happened in the last three hours here. A couple of articles, Articles twelve and thirteen regarding property, properties that the town may decide to take or purchase are reversed, are going to be held in reverse order. Thirteen will be held first and twelve will be considered afterwards on Monday night. And as opening remarks, the moderator commented on the passing of two prominent Winchester residents. First, Peg Paranec, who had worked, used to work in the town clerk's office and was very well liked and known around town. And Bob Bigelow, who a former basketball star and, and lecturer for many years on kids' sports. Both passed away in the past several months. He also commented on Bob Deering finishing up his long tenure at the Educational Facilities Building and Design Committee. Helen Filio wrapping up her tenure on the Capital Planning Committee. Betsy Craigor wrapping up her tenure on the planning board. Then we moved on to what's now is making for a more efficient town meeting. That's called a consent agenda. Eleven articles were on that agenda, Articles one, two, nine, ten, nineteen, twenty-two through twenty-four and twenty-six through twenty-eight, if you're following in your warrant. Those are all taken up and as one article and passed. Although town meeting members, of course, can, can come up and raise questions about some of those if they'd like to, but in the interest of expediency, those are passed all at once. So we opened with a, Article one, of course, as traditional in town meeting, is the reports, the committees. Most of those were just placed on file and can be accessed on the town's website. We did get a video report from the school committee. And in it, two members of the school committee, the Chair and the Vice Chair, commented on the dedication of the students and the teachers during these trying times. Said that the, the committee was trying to run, as they said, two school systems at once. Talked about the diversity efforts of the school department, the financial challenges. Said the student population was down a hundred and fifty from the projection. And they speculated that was because some students are now being homeschooled or going off to private school. And a total of forty-four hundred and fifty-eight enrolled students in the town school system. So the projections are challenging. Also, but said that the McCall Middle School expansion was completed just in time and produced six new classrooms and expanded cafeteria. Next project will be the rebuild of the Lynch Elementary School. The Morocco School is also slated, but that now is, looks like it might be more than a decade away. And they want to, they'll be, Spring Town Meeting will be considering some interim improvements to the Morocco School. So all those preliminary motions were passed. The consent agenda was passed by a vote of one fifty-three to four. We moved on to Article three, which dealt with voting, town meeting voting technology. It was brought before the Spring Town Meeting and this actually, actually is a motion to amend the town's bylaw to allow what exactly what we're doing here tonight and what we did in the spring, which is to allow virtual meetings and electronic recording of votes. Which also maybe used if town, if and when town meeting returns to a, an actual auditorium meeting. But the, the bylaw will make town meeting member votes recorded and made public. Now, this was, this is going to come before the Spring Town Meeting. Mr. Miller, who is the proponent of this, referred to it as accountability to the residents, that town meeting members should be accountable to the residents of the town. to the residents of the Town. And that was passed by 124 to 24. Article 4 from the Planning Board was to allow home occupations in accessory buildings. So in other words, to allow you to maybe have a home office or something like that in a shed or a pool house or some building not in your main residence. That would be subject to restrictions, but it's not currently allowed. So no changes in dimensions and not more... The accessory can... The office space cannot be more than 20% of the total footage of the accessory building and the main residence. There can be no sales or traffic, and there are several uses that are not allowed, such as barber shops, beauty salons, and interestingly enough, mortuary uses. Those are not allowed. The Planning Board views the changes as, in their words, "as undetectable to the residents." It just makes... It allows a person to use a necessary building as a home office. Roger Wilson made a motion to strike restricting it to family members. And this bylaw does restrict it to family members. He said there might be... It might have other people, like a nanny or something like that. But that failed, that motion to amend failed. But, and the main article passed. We moved on to Article 5. Now, that refer... This is referring to the West, so-called West Core of Main Street. Now, that's the area, if you're familiar with downtown, where the liquor store and the Fells Hardware Block, basically from Fells Hardware to the Rotary. And this was a proposal to decrease the allowed heights from 65 feet to 59 feet by special permit and 45 feet by right. The comment was that the Fells Project does conform to this. So again, you could build a building 45 feet high without special permits. A special permit would allow you to build currently up to 65 feet, but this would reduce it to 59 feet. We heard from Mariana Galibov from the Board of Select, the Select Board, that the Board voted 4 to 1 to oppose it, that it felt it was contrary to the efforts to increase the vibrancy of the center area and businesses. Chamber President Craig Rabi also said the Chamber unanimously opposed it, that the objective of the law is trying to increase affordable housing in the center area, and this would be contrary to that. But a resident, Mr. Stevens, on 44 Divine Street, supports it, said that this West Core immediately butts residential properties, which on the other side of the street, the east side of the street, where the gas stations and the Winchester Savings Bank are, does not butt residential properties. So this change to the zoning, though, failed. Town Meeting failed to pass that. So the restrictions will still allow up to 65 feet with a special permit. Article 6, again, dealing with these so-called West Core properties. Right now, there's something called a Plan Unit Development, PUD District. But that requires a 25,000-square-foot requirement. And these lots in this West Core property do not meet that. This was to allow so smaller properties. However, that did fail by a vote of 90 to 57. Article 7 was just to define the term of natural resource in the Town's bylaws, to redefine it to conform with mass general laws that passed. Article 8 was to allow zoning waivers to allow development and preservation of historic or natural resources. So basically, this article was to allow waivers to preserve... Efforts to preserve historic properties or historic items like very old trees or land resources to allow a homeowner to build a smaller-than-allowed, normally-allowed property in order to preserve this. We heard his enthusiastic support from the Winchester Historic Commission, and that did pass. Town Meeting Members passed that by 143 to 10. Again, allowing homeowners with non-conforming properties to allow them to redevelop their properties with a continued non-conformance if it preserves historic or natural resource development. Article 11 was not resolved tonight. It dealt with mechanic... What they call "mechanical landscaping." So basically, Town Meeting and a previous meeting had restricted mechanical landscaping, which is commercial... Or actually, not commercial, but lawn mowers, leaf blowers, trimmers. And also, well, this didn't deal with it, but also restricted construction hours to certain weekday hours and weekend hours. So this article was going to remove that restriction from the property owners. So in other words, you could mow your lawn or use a leaf blower outside of these restricted hours, but you couldn't... But contractors could not. And one of the theories behind this was that contractors use much larger and noisier mowing equipment and leaf blowers, et cetera, et cetera. There were some questions about the wording in the warrant, which apparently did not include leaf blowers. So the discussion on this will continue on Monday night. So there was no action taken on Article 11. And that wraps up our coverage for tonight. It's 10:46. We had three hours, uninterrupted hours of Town Meeting, again, for the second time, conducted virtually. Had a few little snags here and there, but it seems like the Town Meeting Members are getting the hang of this. And we hope you found this interesting. And if you were watching national election results, we hope you found this summary here helpful to you to find out what happened in your local town government. So once again, here from the Wind Cam Studios, I'm Alan Idon. We will be back with more coverage of the second session of Town Meeting next Monday night. We thank you for joining us. Have a great night.